I would like to call the meeting to order. This is the December, sorry, December 4th, 2024, Mendon Select Board Meeting. And if you could please stand and join me in the fudge.
The Regents to the Quiet United States.
And before we proceed any further, I would just like to mention that this meeting is being recorded. So we have a number of things on the agenda this evening. We have one big item, which is a 6:35 public hearing. So we will wait until 6:35 to begin that hearing. So I will take some things out of order. Do we have our citizen's statements and petitions? Okay, under item four, citizen's statements and petitions. So for anything that is not explicitly mentioned on the agenda, if there is any, if there are any comments from the audience or online. Do not see any. And so then I think we could move on to our meeting minutes for approval. So we had some that had been circulated for approval. So I would be, I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I move to approve the March 1st, 2023, June 21st, 2023, and November 6th, 2024 minutes.
Second.
Discussion?
Can we split, I move to amend the motion to approve the minutes to separate March 1st, 2023rd from the other two as I wasn't currently in a select.
Aha, yes. All right.
Second that.
All right, so we will, which, for whom? If it's Brendan, you made the motion, which ones would you like to?
Let's, let's vote on the, on the June 21st and November 6th first.
Okay, discussion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, all right, those we, minutes are approved. So then I would be looking for a motion to approve the 11:06, 24 minutes. Oh. Okay, sorry, which ones, we did the?
Yeah.
We did these two?
Yeah, March, March 1st.
I see, got it, okay, the wrong one. Okay, so then I will take a motion.
Second.
All right, discussion. Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Stained.
Wonderful, stained, thank you. Okay, so. It is 6:33, and I think that probably most of our other items will take longer than a minute. So we will still wait until 6:35 to begin the hearing. Oh, sure. So actually, yes, Jeremy, let's meet up, we do have a couple of things that we expect to be quite quick. So number eight on the agenda, we have some items of recognition. So item eight A is for the Town of Mendon for Green Communities Award.
Yeah, so the town is recognized for reducing its municipal energy consumption 20% within the last five years. So the Town of Mendon is a green communities, community. And since being part of the program in fiscal 2012, the town has received over $740,000 worth of grants from the Green Communities Act in advancing green communities programs. So it's a, it's a great honor for, for the town. And Mazhar Isabella, I was missing my last name, our conservation agent, Isabella Gavio. And I believe Mike, my daughter was at the presentation last Friday to receive the award I have in my office, I'll circulate it to you all. So it's, it's wonderful for the town to be recognized for our energy production efforts, so.
Also wonderful that the town has reduced our energy usage, so excellent all around.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the financial impact, I mean, it's our operating budget was positively impacted by these, so it's good for the environment, it's good for the budget. So it's good all around.
Great, and then we do have the other recognition that it is 6:35.
Sorry, yeah, it's good.
So, so we will be starting this hearing in just a moment. I will be looking for a motion to open the meeting. But first, before we start, I did want to, want to disclose that as this is a small town, I have a friendly social relationship with a number of the members of the Vanderwijk family. But I have no financial interest in the business or the farm. So I just wanted to disclose that first of all, and also invite if there are any other members that have disclosures to make.
Well, making it easy. I am going to butter to the Vanderwijk, so I'm going to abstain from the conversation and I'm going to recuse myself to the audience. Taking my coffee.
And are there any other disclosures from our board? Then, so then I would be looking for a motion to open the public hearing.
I move to open the 6:35 PM public hearing to review the application for a farmer series pouring permit, certain averages, and annual entertainment license, and a change of hours.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, great, so the hearing is open. And so just so we know, this is an opportunity for the public to come forward. We will invite the applicants to come up and speak, and then we will open the floor to comment from the public. We would like to ask that people keep, so after the applicants, we would like to ask that people keep their comments to three minutes or less if possible, and to request if they do need more time, please do ask me, the chair, and we can consider. So we, I know there, there are more people in the audience than usual, so we do want to be, to carefully pay attention to the time, to give everybody a chance to speak. So I guess first I would like to invite the applicants to join us table, whoever is speaking on behalf. Jeremy, did you have anything to add?
Um, yeah, just kind of setting sort of ground rules in addition to how the chair did. There are three questions in front of, in front of the board tonight as a result of the public hearing. They do not all require a vote tonight. There is the distinct possibility of a continuation of the public hearing to a later date. If there's additional facts, questions, information, whatever needs to be kind of hashed out beyond this, additional deliberation of wish, that the board wishes to have at a later date. It is, no definitive action is required tonight. So I don't want the board to think you're back into a corner at one point or another. And also there is an application with the ABCC as part of this, so if there are modifications, there's kind of additional, additional steps to take there, which would require an additional, additional time.
All right, great, thank you. And if I could ask the applicants to add, say who you are, please.
My name is Lisa Vander.
Casey Vanderwijk, 25, Level 3, Hollywood.
Susan Vanderwijk.
Great, thank you. And then did you have some information that you'd like to share with us?
Um, so I guess I'll take it piece by piece. The, I'll address the entertainment license first. So when we initially applied for the entertainment license, I was hoping, I'd also applied for a Mendon Cultural Council grant in hopes that we were going to do like some sort of small, like summer concert series, like in town. So people could come and listen to live music, like on a Friday night when we're open. Unfortunately, we didn't get the grant. But we still would like to have the opportunity to maybe do some like live acoustic music. When I submitted the application, it was like for the Monday to Saturday license, we're obviously not open all of those hours, so we don't need the license for all of those hours. I was mostly thinking it would be like for a Friday, like acoustic music on like a Friday evening from like 5:00 to 8:00 PM type of thing. It's not something that I've scheduled, but I do have like, do have people that reach out to us, local musicians that we love to support. You know, looking for a venue to play their music, so it's something that we hope to add, but on a very small scale. That's that piece of it.
Do we want to discuss that first, and give you one at a time?
I think that sounds like a good idea, just to board agree.
I will, I will add context that typically it's that entertainment licenses, exceptions, uh, a lot of the entertainment licenses are granted on a case by case basis, on an event by event basis. Our entertainment application has a date and hour associated to it, and granting a year-long entertainment license is not the universal approach in town.
Yeah, so I guess a question would be, are there any businesses that have a year-long entertainment license in town? For comparison?
Yeah, you know, wouldn't any restaurant and bar that has entertainment have an annual license that we renew every year?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, the outdoor aspect, so with, with the immediate comparison was the Mendon Twin Drive-In, who has outdoor music venues and applies for individual entertainment licenses.
So, so the license as it's listed here does not describe what you just described.
Yeah, sure.
Right, which you said, I'm not saying, but I'm just wondering, so is there an opportunity to modify this to be more specific to what you described?
Yeah. Yeah. To that, like I said, you know, like we're only open Fridays and Sundays, I didn't open for the permit, so like Friday, like afternoon, evening.
And this is specific to outdoor, because Jeremy, you mentioned outdoor, but you mentioned there is ongoing asks around the lodge within this, I think, building.
There's, there's an ask there, but right now, all everything, like everything's, everything's, nothing is working.
So, so those types of specifics can be added so that if you look to expand your business, you need to come back, right?
And that's part of the reasonable regulation of within the purview.
So, I mean, so potentially could an application list a sequence of specific events, dates and events as opposed to a one-time one, so? So like, I know it's hard to know.
Like Friday from 5:00 to 8:00 PM.
Yeah, certainly, so, so there's a date of events, so we can say Fridays, either seasonal or yearly on Friday.
And I don't even, like, honestly, like, I don't have anything booked, and I don't think it would be like a weekly thing.
And the hours appear to be from 10:00 to 11:00, I think I saw 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM, which.
Yeah, that's in the other license application.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's, I probably want to, I mean, I feel like this is, these are three pieces, parts of a whole, because I think breaking them up, I, I mean, I read as a whole, that's why I'm coming at, asking these questions.
Right. That's, that's relevant, especially as they, as they connect. But I think while we are on the topic of the, the live music application, I would like to invite questions specifically about that, and then we can like expand beyond that. So any questions, yeah, Mike?
I guess my question about the, this live entertainment, what, what is the timeframe and when is this all going to happen, next year?
Yeah, it would be not till the springtime, we open usually at the end of April or beginning of May.
My, my suggestion would be that we, we table the discussion of any kind of an entertainment license yet, and deal with changes in the other issues, the other two pieces. First and deal with that later, unless there's some kind of.
No, there's no urgency, we just, honestly, I just thought like, oh, we're, I had talked to Katie and I was like, oh, well, we're just, if we do it all at once, then we just have to go over to the select board once. I was just trying to make it easier, but we're happy to come back in the springtime if that is easier.
Yes, as long as there's enough lead time, because I understand you need to book.
Right, yeah.
Book people, and if you need to have enough time to get that done, but if it's not urgent tonight, I think we should deal with the other two issues. At least discuss those first and if it goes smoothly, then we can discuss that too. I think we should take the other two pieces first.
Okay, that's an option, actually, did you have any other?
I just want to, to be fair to all of you, any questions we do have that are takeaways, I'd probably, since you're here, want to give you the opportunity to hear the questions. But if we want to make the other two first, that's fine.
I mean, we can certainly circle back to this before the end of the hearing. So thank you for, thank you for that clarification, I think that's useful.
Yeah, I had one question regarding acoustic music, so is that acoustic, non-amplified, or you expect to have, you know, people with a giant sound system?
Uh, no, I wasn't expecting a giant sound system. Honestly, yeah, like we're still in the planning phase, but I expect like, you know, just like very low-key, like the whole, I don't know if you guys have been to the winery, like when we're open, but the vibe is usually pretty, pretty low-key and relaxed, so that's kind of the vibe we'd be going for with live music as well.
I, I think I'd take his point, because I think when, when I looked at, I'm looking, give me, looking for some balance, because I think some people have questions on what is this going to be? So to the extent, and I don't know what the extent, Jeremy, we can actually apply specificity to the entertainment license, but I never thought about acoustic, non-amplified, which is a new term.
There will be some amplified, because I mean, all these magicians today, you know, they step on the pedal and they record what they're playing, and they play to their own music, you know, so.
Within, within, you know.
Yeah, right, yeah.
And, and it's more, the question I would look for is some guidance on what level of.
Well, I mean, my kids are going to be sleeping across the street, so.
My kids could sleep through anything.
Yeah, so our, our permit has a, both a description of the entertainment, so it's within the purview of the board to drill down on specificity, and then we have dates, hours, and whether it's annual, seasonal, one-time. So in this event, I would call it seasonal, we would define seasonal April through October.
Yeah, through October.
Open, and then dates of events, Fridays, hours of events, six to eight, or whatever it gets set, so we can amend this application.
And you know, if we get comments now, then you know, that'll help guide us, right?
Right. So. So I would, I guess, if there are any comments specifically about the live music question, we probably will be circling back to this, but if there are questions from the public specifically about this, I would entertain them. So you could identify yourself, yes, thank you for coming forward, if you could say your name, please, and address.
Thank you, I'm here, my name is Henry Lane, I'm here on the city on behalf of Mr. Gerald, who is resident, 13th Street in Mendon. And maybe Frank, this is not the first questions I've looked at. And because it's so sketchy, I guess I have lots of questions. First of all, I apologize because sitting in the back, I couldn't really hear all the details of what was going on, and I'm not even sure where this entertainment is supposedly going to occur. Is it going to be indoors or outdoors?
Would you mind repeating again since, since it sounds like not everyone in the audience could hear? So is this indoor, outdoor, and where?
It would be outdoor, it would be like in our main picnic area at the farm, and we propose like, you know, a Friday evening, some acoustic music.
Well, typically, when, when we look at entertainment licenses like this, one of the first questions is, you know, what's the capacity of the facility? And again, I'm not familiar enough with the, with the facility, it tells you whether we're talking 10 people or 100 people. I think, you know, that's typically the kind of information we request upfront. What's the capacity of the facility, how many people are you actually going to generate? And then secondly, depending by parking, and you can provide the other facilities, sanitary facilities, et cetera, for the, it's time to be the audience you're going to have, because you really need that information to decide whether it's appropriate. But before we even get to that, I looked at your bilogs repeatedly the last couple of days, I don't see anything in your bilogs that allows concert-type events, you know, in a rural residential zoning district. And this, you know, provisions for winery, but nothing about entertainment, you know, this is private commercial zone. I represent a neighbor who frankly does not want to hear somebody else's music on any night of the week, he'll generate his own music. And I can tell you, I've represented a number of facilities, both occasionally with places like the Indian Ranch, you know, which has outdoor entertainment on weekends. Has a lot of unhappy neighbors, because they frankly don't want to attend concerts, everybody can either. You know, if they want to go to a concert, they'll go to a legitimate concert venue where people are properly licensed and properly zoned, and are in situations where they don't create a, you know, significant adverse impact on unwilling participants in the event. So, you know, as I say, from the zoning point of view, I don't think it's allowed to begin with. And secondly, we haven't gotten nearly enough information to decide whether this is a good thing or a bad thing. Say if there's 10 people sitting around, you know, a table inside of the winery, you know, with an acoustic guitar singing folk songs, now, again, there's no problem. But if you get about 100 people with rock music out in the, out in the field or out in the parking lot, you have a real problem. So at this point, I don't know how the board can actually make a decision, but I, I know how to make a decision, they can just say, hey, look, it's not allowed in the zone, so why are we even having this discussion? But if we're going to have a discussion, we should at least have enough information so we can make an intelligent decision, but is this a reasonable impact on neighbors who are unwilling to participate? Or is it not? And I think the only reasonable conclusion again is unless it's indoors, it's not reasonable to impose entertainment on neighbors who thought they were buying property in a quiet rural residential neighborhood, not an entertainment venue, but, you know, those are, you know, my initial issues, and I think they need to be addressed one way or the other.
Okay, thank, thank you for your comments and for raising those questions. We, we definitely can follow up on those questions, especially since it does sound like we won't be voting specific application tonight. But as we consider the path forward, we will take those questions into consideration and consult with Town Council about that.
I also want to make a point that you may not have heard, been able to hear us, but our discussion did focus on driving refining the application, so it's much more the specificity you're looking for.
Yeah.
So that was discussed.
Right.
And that's why I probably don't think I would be willing to make a decision tonight, but we've got to.
Right, and the previous speaker did bring in some additional questions, so I don't, hopefully you can hear now, I'll try to project. So there were some additional questions, so in addition to what we discussed, we can, we can ask those questions as well, and hopefully continue this. So, but I guess I would like to open it up to the rest of the public about, specifically about the live music question for, you know, three minutes or less. And if you could come to the table and please state your name and address, and if there's more than one person.
So I'm not from around 31 Wall Street. I'm so afraid you can hear me. I live directly across the street from the farm, and even at this point, there is music played over an intercom, just radio, guessing Sirius XM or something. And it has never been an issue at all at my location, and as I said, I'm directly across from the Blueberries. So I expect that, again, it was specified in terms of levels of amplification. Unless there's, you know, we bring in modeling crew with like the whole wall of sound or something, that it's not going to be an issue, because as again, again, music is played there nightly on Fridays, and I, I can, I can usually catch a, a bit, but otherwise it's certainly never an issue.
For your comments, were there, did I see there were other comments, I think, I think I saw someone there standing up, so if you, if you could come up, please?
Two houses over from 25 Wall Street. I can't say that I don't hear the music, I won't say that it really bothers me, it really doesn't really bother me, and the frequency that it's at now, over that to be more, I would have a big problem with that. Big problem with that, I wouldn't be able to sit down on my deck, enjoy my company on a Sunday afternoon and not have to listen to somewhere else's music. I can't hear the kids playing, I can't hear people talking, it really depends on how the wind blows. So if the winds blow towards my direction and I hear them, if the winds blow towards the other direction, then I don't hear them as much. But it's already started, I mean, he's already got his time around across the street, we're in a, I didn't find the host to live like that.
Right, well, so we're trying, at this point, we're keeping it around music, so thank, thank you for your thoughts, thank you. And did I see one more person, and I know we, what's that? Oh, yeah, if you could please say your, your name and address, I think we said your, your address, but if you could.
Oh, 19 Levels.
Okay, thank you.
Jane Moore, I live at Seven Harbor, down the street, and then I walk over there. Just as a person who's frequented the venue before, I'm coming from a customer's point of view, just excited to hear that more options available there. Always been great to my kids there, and it's like a great place to be out where the kids can just roam around the barn and have a good time. So excited to hear that we could have more opportunities there, and I think it'll be a good addition to the town. So we're totally good at, and they can break off if they want. You're going to be good to us.
Okay, thank you for your comments, and we do have a number of other issues, I think, oh, we will have opportunity to have comments coming up, but I did want to, I guess we could take a couple, if we have a couple more, if we can keep it quick, we do have the other questions about the, the hours and the light, other, the alcohol licensing, but if you could say your name and address.
Donna Shalali, 15 Leonard Grove. I'm just, I, correct me if I'm wrong, heavy in years past, I, I went when my children were little, going to Town Beach for concerts over the summer, live concerts outside on the beach in a residential area. So I think we have done outdoor concerts, and those were more than just one person on a guitar, so I just wanted to.
Thank you, thank you for pointing that out, and then.
Dr. Alexander, 14 Level Street. One of my concerns is if the entertainment license is granted, will that draw in what people, and what is the capacity of the farm? Is there a capacity? And will it be any farm as it is now, or will it be in rehab house?
So this.
It's for the current location.
The current location?
Yeah.
And, and does that change as the, as, would they have to come back if that changed?
We can ask that question of, of Town Council, so thank you for bringing those questions to us, and I think if we could, so I would like to keep going and bring up the other licensing issues, so I think maybe the pouring license.
Well, that's out of order in my notes.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
Go ahead, just to go through all, all the pouring license, so the not change of hours.
Well, the pouring license might be faster, what, what's your thought?
Yeah, so the, the ABCC application is both for a 19H and a change of hours, so I think.
Okay, so we'll talk, okay, we'll take them again, okay.
For the rest of my time, I'll be great about it. Okay, so for the change of hours, the main reason we, I'm going to talk nice and loud so everyone can hear me. The main reason for the change of hours is because we do open to sell Christmas trees, that was our main crop. And one of the things that happens is the Christmas tree hours are different than the winery hours, people coming to buy a Christmas tree at 9:00 in the morning, they're like, oh, can I grab a bottle of wine to go? And I have to say no. So the reason for the change of hours was just so that when we open for Christmas trees, we can also sell wine to go. So that was basically the bottom line on the change of hours, to say, oh, we can open at 10:00 AM on Saturday and Sunday instead of, you know, 11:00 or 12:00 AM. It wasn't that we were going to be pouring glasses of wine at 10:00 in the morning, that was never the plan at all. We don't open, we're open only two days a week, we open on Fridays at 2:00, we open on Sundays at 12:00, and then there's two Saturdays out of the year that we open at 11:00 in the morning. So we're not planning on any like big hour changes, we just wanted to be able to sell some wine to go during the Christmas tree season, which was the reason for the change of hours.
Uh, do you want any questions, yeah?
Just, so you're, even though we're talking about a pouring license, this isn't to, to start pouring early, it's just to sell it retail off the shelf.
Correct.
I mean, that makes sense, can you specify, add a level of specificity for retail sales versus pouring?
Yeah, that's a question for the ABCC, which we'll ask tomorrow morning.
Because I would publicly say, I, I would have no issue with allowing people who are already there. Right. To, to purchase the wine, you know, to, to take away, to give as gifts, because. But, but again, I think, again, I would, I would guess it would need to go through the, you know, alcohol. But, but again, I think, again, I would, I would guess it would need to go through the, you know, Alcohol Beverage Commission.
Additional questions from the board?
No, I actually agree with Mike. Yeah.
Yeah, there's no distinction on our license about whether like retail versus.
Okay.
You know.
And maybe, and it may be that that's the one that, that they released, the, the one that they gave, that they told us to issue or what they issued. But I'm pretty sure that we would have some latitude to specify hours of consumption on premises versus people there to.
Right. Well, when I reached out to the ABCC, they told me it was up to the local licensing authority to change the hours.
Again, we're not just talking about house purpose.
Specific.
Talking about activities.
Yeah.
And it could be, I mean, it, it could be that, you know, if it's, if it's, maybe we need to issue an additional license.
Right.
To purchase retail only during those hours, not to be consumed on premises.
Yeah.
I don't know. I also don't know if this is a different spot. But I do know, I'm certain that there, number one, laws that dictate it. Number two, if there's a way for the state to get compensated, they'll go on it.
Yeah.
And we'll, but we'll find that out. And I just want to say in principle, I would wholeheartedly agree that, that anything that would make it easier for people to purchase your wares all for it. But I think we have to make sure we go through the right process to do it.
Great. Yeah.
And then was there a, but there was also, I believe, the change of category for the malt and wine in addition. So that.
Yelling to that.
Ah, okay. All right.
Okay. Can I talk about the additional loft space first? I feel like that's a quick one. I know you don't get it.
Well, I, I, I don't know about it. So like, yeah, so anytime I don't know about something, I'm assuming it's complicated. So please do fill us in.
Okay. So like when we originally got our license from the town, that building didn't exist. We got our original pouring license from the town in two thousand seventeen. And I believe we started construction on the, it was a garage building. So when you pull into the farm winery, it's the building like just at the back end of the parking lot. It's like three big, three bay garage doors. That's the building we're talking about. The lower level is garage space for farm equipment and whatnot. And then we finished the upstairs. So that didn't exist when we initially applied for our pouring license from the town. It's since been finished. And so we want to be able to use the space, like if it's raining or whatever, we want to be able to like bottle of wine, stay dry. So we used to use the, the main barn where we retail out of now as like a little tasting room. When COVID hit, we converted that space for kind of storage. And our servers kind of work out of there now for wine and bring out to their tables. So we don't really have an indoor space where people can go in and enjoy a bottle of wine or a glass of wine when it's raining. So since that's been finished, we have the occupancy permit. We would like it to just get added to our current.
So Jeremy is.
Oh, yeah. So we, like, we just want to sort of add it to the current license. Like the whole farm is currently licensed, you know? And so that's part of the farm now. We just want to get it.
So it's, yeah, Level Street across the top. I see the blueberries on the, on the right under that. And then the, the right, the barn building, which is where barn, and I see picnic table there. And so then to the left and below that is the building we're talking about, that, that garage building. And so that is the loft space.
Yeah, the upstairs is the loft. It like looks out over the Christmas trees.
I guess another question, if initially the, you know, the small, the small building in the front.
Yeah.
Which was initially where people could consume inside.
Yes.
And then you stopped letting them consume inside, but the original license allowed that.
Yes.
Is it, is it necessary for, for a change or to issue any kind of a change? If you're actually now allowing people to consume inside another space on a property? I, I don't know that. Again, I think that's why.
Well, it's specifically listed that the.
The barn.
The barn building on the license.
On license, okay.
So.
Twenty seventeen.
That's why.
Suggesting is that we need to alter the license.
Yeah.
Through the additional.
But you, you're not changing the nature of the license or you are changing the nature of the license?
That's separate.
Well, it's kind of, it's all the same thing.
It's all really.
My, from my perspective, you know, you initially, when this was initially issued, you were, you were serving, serving wine inside and outside.
Correct.
And you still want to serve it inside and outside.
Yes.
You're more square footage.
Makes sense.
Right. So if there is, so if there's a need for us to alter the square footage of some kind of an occupancy, certainly makes sense.
Yeah.
I just think we need to probably take that into advisement, get some legal advice, circle back. But that's.
Yeah, that's fine.
Are there other questions from the board? So I, I do see, okay, there was a hand up. So there's the separate question about the change of category that we're going to get to in a moment.
That's the next thing.
Okay. All right. So it's all, okay, so it's all in the same application. So I think if you could continue then, if we will open it up to public.
Just related. So it's basically just like changing the description of the premises on licenses is what I was requesting.
Not, so not really the purpose, just where on the property.
Right.
Where on the farm.
Yes.
You're going to serve and consume, but some of it's still going to be indoor and some is going to be outdoor, like initially.
Exactly.
Okay.
We just want, yeah. Okay. Okay. Last but not least. So we did, we are applying for a farmer brewer. I can never say it properly. Farmer brewery pouring license from the town. We went ahead and applied for the federal and the state. In the last step to becoming a farm brewery is to get the license from the town. The idea is not to brew our own beer, although that would be lovely, but we're not like, we have no plans to brew our own beer. It's simply just to provide another offering for people when they come. Not everyone likes to drink wine, but right now wine is all we have to offer. A lot of people come, just like the live music. They say, oh, but you know, live music, they also say, oh, it'd be great if you had beer. Oh, my girlfriend only drinks beer, so he won't come with me. So we thought this is kind of like a, a trend that a lot of farms do. What they'll do is get their farmer brewery license and then just contract with another local brewery. So the idea would just be that we would have someone contract brew for us and we would probably put two beers on tap. It would be another offering when people came to the farm and they wanted to drink a beer instead of. That's it.
Questions from the board on that point?
Yet again, I would, I would need some counsel about the, to me, this, this all circles around your farm. And the town vote is a right to farm community. You know, particularly in what was previously a residential area, but you know, we have farms everywhere. You know, are we crossing the line by letting you sell, you know, beer that's brewed by another, you know, another similar or a different type of operation? And, and I don't know that. I'm not necessarily against it, but I am concerned about following the town's bylaws or, you know, maybe we need to go to the townspeople, allow them to change it. If, if it was considered a change, again, we'd have to ask the ABCC. That's, that's my thought.
And Jeremy, did you, you had looked into, I believe, the right to farm details about.
Well, I don't think there's any question that, that we know that the, that the wine that's, that's made primarily from the blueberries and other that they make, you know, falls under that purview.
Right.
Litigated that, we're understanding all of that. My question is, does this, you know, adding this other, you know, beer.
Right.
Does that, does that change the operation of the definition of it? That would be a big question. And I, I think, again, I think it's, it's probably already been figured out. Because like you said, it's done in other places. We just need to be consistent with what everybody else has done. So that would be the question. I, what's the.
So, so I spoke with, so I spoke with town council about this and town council's licensing authority on this. There is nothing about the right to farm law or the farmer series that inherently grants someone the immediate ability to this license. The select board has reasonable regulation over the issuance of this license. And has to consider public convenience and public good in its consideration of issuing this license. Under the nineteen H series, which you're talking about, with farmer series permits, it permits the farmer series to sell their own products or products produced for them and sold under their brand name. So that's the contract piece that you were talking about.
Yep.
And this is the piece that I need a little bit more clarification from on town council. Under MGL forty A, section three, about the percentage of crops. And you probably know this better than I do, but twenty five percent of what you sell needs to be produced on, on premise.
Right.
And of the rest of what you sell, fifty percent of it needs to be produced within Massachusetts.
Yeah.
I guess, but my specific, I'm looking at the other side. You said that there's nothing that, that grants it. My question is, is there anything in the law that, that would, that prevents us or has ever prevented any other organ, any other farm in any other community?
There is nothing that specifically prevents it with this fact pattern. It is the purview of the policymaking of select board to say, is this a reasonable regulation which we should sanction? Yes, you sanction, no. And is it in the public good and public convenience?
And you're not looking to change the occupancy amount or the frequency of how often you're open or anything else? You simply want to add some more variety.
Correct. Yes.
That you sell, that people would consume on premises. It boy.
Would, would the indoor space be concurrently used as the outdoor space? You've, you've, you set it up as if it rains, we need someplace to go inside. But from occupancy, you are potentially increasing the current occupancy if you're running both simultaneously, right?
The plan is not to run both simultaneously, no.
But again, I'm not asking about the plan. I mean, obviously that's true too. But what I want to find out is we, we probably should, either we have or we should put a restriction on the total size. Yeah. So that it doesn't, we don't turn into Mission Creek.
Right.
Where the idea is that we're going to have two hundred people there, either inside or outside. And suddenly we have four hundred people there, inside or outside. So that, that would be my concern, that we probably put a limit on this about the capacity within the roadways. And, you know, that we don't overtax public safety, you know? But at the same time, I, I really, I don't see any, any issue with adding, you know, adding additional things for sale while they're there that's within the same type product. And it's within the, the allowable laws. As a matter of fact, I think, I think the past practice and other areas probably preclude us from stopping you from doing it. You know, I, I know we have a, a right to do it, you know, to, we have a, you know, a say in this. But at the same time, I don't think it's, especially with the people that talked about, you know, I, I keep going back to this. But, you know, we had a very, I remember the town meeting, we talked about the right to farm bylaw and town's wishes to allow this type of activity and how popular it was. And we've always forever talked about increasing opportunities to gain more revenue for the town. And this gained more revenue for the town. And I'm grateful for what you do. It's, it's wonderful on so many levels. But at the same time.
Yeah, I'd agree. I think this is, when you're thinking about trying to drive some commercial activity in the town, this would be the type of business that fits the rural character of Mendon. But we do have to balance that with the fact that you're in a rural residential zone. I do think the zoning question is open. It's on the table. We just need to clarify that. Because I would think that if there needs to be, I'm not even sure an exception can be granted. Because I mean, the, the right to farm means that you can operate a farm in rural residential and, you know, it's supposed to protect you from nuisance. Issues. The question in my mind, sorry, at, at some point, where does, I see reference to a kitchen and a bar in the loft space on the drawing. So are you, what kind of kitchen? Is that becoming a restaurant where I see the restaurant box checked on the license? You know, so I mean, so what is the scale? That's not clear to me. That's something I want to clarify. Because then you get away from agritourism, which makes sense. I mean, outdoor acoustic music, as you've described it, that makes sense to me, given what you do today. As you expand your business, are you starting to move from farming and a winery into a restaurant business in a residential zone? So I want to be really careful with.
Right. Well, there's a lot of limit, you know, how much other things we can do.
Understood. I just want to make sure that, as, as from a licensing authority, I want to make sure we're very specific so that if folks do have questions or concerns, that we're trying to balance the rights of the business, the rights of the residents.
Yeah. So just to clarify, there's a refrigerator.
I just read the words. I don't know what those words mean. So it's pretty much like pub tables, standing rooms, tables, a bar and a servant. This place you serve the wine.
The bear. And.
And as, you know, when, when, I was curious about this, kind enough to give me a, a tour of that facility across the street when this was all starting to come. So there are their plans, my understanding was there are no plans to start a restaurant. It's just, there's an area that's set up over there to serve.
Oh, yeah.
To serve, to continue to serve what you already serve.
Yes.
We're still talking about the loft when you say that, over there?
Yeah.
And this has nothing to do with the parking lot, anything across the street?
Nothing to do with it. We're not talking about anything across the street.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the board?
Okay. Can I just respond to one of the comments? So in response to like some of the right to farm. So like, I think one of the issues that comes up, at least for us, is like, so we are right to farm community and we see farms and there's very few left in Mendon. And one of the issues is to have a farm in Mendon, you have to make it sustainable. And to be sustainable, you have to make money.
Agreed.
And so one of the ways we make money and preserve all of the farmland that we have is by selling wine and by being open to the public. So I think it's important to consider that, like, yeah, it's great to have farms, but, you know, you have to.
Not to make them just work.
Let us be sustainable.
Needs to be a viable business.
Yeah. It needs to be a viable business. And we mean, we have to make money to, you know, do all the, do all the things we do to have the land and, and farm the land and all of those things.
Yeah. So we've been there for forty years and I never made any money. My day job pays for it all. But, you know, those days have gone. You know, it's like, I mean, you're not doing all of this stuff. But children have to take it over and they need to have money to live. So.
So, so the issue of, of the three issues, the one I, I think is the most clear cut we could, is, is the question of allowing them to, you know, add on the, the. And we've already, I, I think, I just want to make sure I understand. You're, you're not talking about increasing capacity. Well, this, that particular issue is increasing capacity or, except it's just increasing or adding another something else for people to consume and buy. And we've already checked with council and with ABCC and we can, we can do that. Correct?
So I guess that one question is to what extent we can separate some of these questions in our voting? Or if we should vote, since they're all on the same, at least several of these are on the same application. But the, the music one is separate. But it sounds like there are some additional questions and clarifications that need to happen before we can vote on at least all of these questions. But whether it makes sense to vote on any of them.
Yeah. So what we have right now is the ABCC application, which is subject to the parameters of the ABCC and not the local licensing authority, which is what you have before you. So the restrictions that the board is interested in, in terms of hours for pouring versus hours of retail, we can craft that more specifically in a local licensing approval. And we can do that like on a staff level and continue the public hearing, represent that to the board, represent that to the public and have that be the motion that the board votes.
And just so we're clear, your, your question is to keep the hours the same when you're open, but then start selling the wine at like ten o'clock instead of noon?
So it's actually two separate. So it's actually two separate applications. I believe that the brewery is, uh, the application for a new license, which is here, and then there's the amendment, which includes the change of hours and the addition of, uh, the loft space, and that also includes, um, the nineteen age that Jeremy was talking about where, so when you apply for the license, you have your winery license and you have your space on the farm where you sell wine, and then you have your brewery license, you have your space on the farm where you spell, sell beer, and then Massachusetts has the nineteen age that lets you combine those so that you can sell wine in your beer area and beer in your wine area. So the beer application is actually separate and then.
But it's beer, but but I want to make sure you understand this, but you're going to be serving the beer in the same area. One.
That would.
That's what, that's what nineteen eight allows, so.
Yeah.
Twenty eighteen.
Nineteen eight.
Twenty sixteen, the state government combines E, C and E or whatever the hell.
So, so in order to allow that to happen, you
Yes.
Okay, so those two pieces go together.
Thank you. Hey, you, the beer could get approved first and then the nineteen age combining them could be approved separately.
But to approve just the beer one, you'd have to segregate it, is what I'm saying.
Yes.
I mean, that, to me, doesn't make a lot of sense.
Right, and I think, I think especially if we do end up needing to continue the hearing, we, we would need to close the hearing in order to vote on anything, so I think because there are several issues still undecided.
Sure.
Just a couple of things, I, I want to recap capacity. Said, I'm, I'm not aware of what the current capacity is aside from go, going there and seeing the number of people, you know? And then what the potential increase in capacity would be, because honestly, based on the business model, I'm not sure why you're not running indoor and outdoor at the same time. Uh, hon- honestly, so.
Don't. I said indoor space.
Well, no, my point is we grant this going forward, then it's either something where we need to specify, only, you know, limit the capacity so it doesn't make sense to do both or allow both to happen, but understand what the capacity could be.
But you do, but you do have allowable indoor space, you just don't use it right now, right?
We don't use it now.
Right, so you do have a license.
We do have a license, or.
You just don't.
You're using a space for something else, not.
Exactly, yes, that's true.
So is there, does specifying a square footage indoor of that other area? Are you ready that you don't use?
Square footage of that building, it, it's, um.
There's a description of premises that describes that.
Yeah, it just says one floor, with one entrance, one exit, occupancy twenty-four, and then the outdoor entrance.
So, but the new space that you're proposing at the back of a property.
Yeah.
Is.
Is bigger.
Is big.
Big.
So I guess that's, that's what would have to be specified, I think that's what Mike was asking too.
Yeah, and just capacity, because it was a question of overall capacity, noise levels, things like that. I mean, if you double your capacity by adding an indoor space, oh, no, it's, it, it, it's an example, I've no idea, I've never seen it, I just want to understand what the capacity.
Capacity on the application is sixty-four and the occupancy number is seventy-five.
So, but potentially seventy-five additional people to what we see today.
Front seat.
Right, so.
Which really doesn't, isn't, I mean, how many, how many fannies sit outside on picnic table and are outside during the day? Hundreds, right?
Hundreds.
Hundreds, hundreds.
Oh, so you could be actually increasing it by a third, that's not insignificant.
Is it, is, is that what the proposal is? Because then we would probably need to put a, I think, put a.
That's, I, I just want to understand capacity and then understand what a reasonable capacity is. We should probably talk to Chief Kersey.
Right.
Public safety, road use, parking, and that's, that's.
Parking, so that's the question, so, so right now, we've got, I, and maybe I should know this and I don't. The current licenses as they exist, what is the occupancy of the facility? It's on the.
There is no occupancy on, on the fields of the farm. Um, the licenses from the federal government and the state, especially the state, um, the license is good on all of the property.
Right, so they don't specify.
So they don't specify, so.
Uh, but I think we would all agree that, you know, there is, there's, there is a reasonable amount, then there's another.
Some way.
Right, so to me, if we could come up with a number that's reasonable for the facility, whether they're inside or outside. Because that way you have the issue, we have people outside and it rains and they want to go inside.
Well, right, so, so I think, I, I, I might say it this way as well, a lack of a capacity cap in my mind could be troublesome.
It is, it's problematic.
So I.
Hasn't been an issue, but it could be. Yeah, and the other, we need to devise that.
I don't want to clarify any zoning considerations. Be clarified next time we get together.
Um, so, uh, are there any additional, um, do you have any more to present about your application?
That's all.
Okay, are there any other questions from the board about this? I, I think that, um, this has gone on for a little bit longer than I anticipated, but I think it is important, every, a lot of people came out for this meeting. Um, I would, since people are here in the room, I would be willing to take a few more minutes of co- of comment from the public before um, we continue, but I think most likely we will be continuing this hearing as opposed to closing it. Uh, but I would like to invite, if, uh, again, under, yes, please do talk again, and if you could, or comments short.
Like, it's been short and fortunate, not sure I can do that because, uh, again, the application is so thin, it's hard to really figure out what's probably running, so you want to have to figure out what this loft space was, probably by indirect means that I would say I could figure out that was the one building on the property that it could have been. Having determined that, I did not have an opportunity to check with the building office to see what that building was actually built for. But let me suggest to you, first of all, the brewery is not exempt use. Not amended, so only by law, they're not allowed, they're not allowed to be in a residential zone. Uh, wineries are exempt under the state statute, section three forty A says that wineries are exempt from building. Brewery's are not. This is not.
Well, I just, but, well, we, we get clarification that you can do both, and this isn't a brewery as much as it's, they're, they're not going to brew it there, they're selling it to somebody else, and I'm arguing with you. I'm just making sure that that's why we're asking these questions, that's what the hearing is for.
Okay, let me, uh, forty A, section three, provides statute or an exemption for wineries, okay? Only wineries, not facilities, that's not restaurants.
But how does that, how does that square with what our town minister, our town administrator investigated about the, the law that allowed the wine and the beer to be consumed in the same area?
Under the the ABCC rules, sure, that's not a problem.
Okay.
But you never get to that question until you get to the zoning issue. It's not allowed amended. If it was about amended, let's specify whether to open up facility on, on, um, on street road. No problem, I'd get a license, so that's, that's, that's a commercial zone.
Well, I would, I would, I would suggest, we had some of these discussions in this right to farm by law meeting and about what's allowable and, and what's not allowable, and I don't know the answer to it, but I think, um, you have an argument, but I think there's, there's more to the question.
I would say this, in terms of the zoning, it's, uh, it's an item we have as a takeaway to clarify what we're permitted to do. Right, so we, I would hear you.
Thank you for adding additional question for us to clarify.
Yeah, it's, it's probably also an issue with tha- that extra building, it's not just a square foot of space. I know we already have a building, um, and you stopped using one building and now you want to use a different building. Probably need to take that into consideration, and it may even turn into another zoning issue with the ZBA or, or maybe not, but it's something we need to look into further, that's, I guess, what.
Did you have a different point?
Secondly, and I think this is, that's not what was really aggressive. But you have, you have, you know, they're the same for a facility for illegal consumption of that, which is, requires a capacity, seating plan, all that kind of stuff. And you need that for another reason, first of all, because you have enough parking, okay?
Well, we just, we just discussed that, the original one does have a capacity indoor. We just discussed that the new one would need another capacity, so we did address that.
The application is sixty-four seating, seventy-five.
Yeah, so it's there.
Still have to determine based on the capacity that's permitted. Do they need the parking by law, because Mendon has a parking by law.
Right.
Requires, you know, the, the formula, and there's a requirement for the parking lot that has to look like. You can't make that confrontation until you have the actual capacity.
And we have an action item on both, yeah, determine capacity and engage public safety. Make sure that parking and road safety is covered based on that capacity.
Thank you for bringing up the parking by law as well, so.
And then the question is again, since I was just, just today, I keep figuring out what space we're actually talking about. As I said, I don't know what was actually built to have, what was built for, but for, it's going to be used based place of public assembly. All kinds of other issues come up, first of all, you have a subject system that's designed to take care of seventy-five people, okay? Is it a place of public assembly that's going to require a, a stringless system?
And, and again, it's, it's on the application and we're going to look into all of it.
It's not on the application, is it accessible, does it need an elevator? All that have to be considered, but.
I, I will say, sir, uh.
In the right to farm law, by the way, there's nothing about beer, okay? There's nothing.
We already, we already did, we already discussed, leave free there, I guess, I just want to be clear, well, what I want to be clear is we want everybody to be heard, but, and I'm just going to say this publicly, as I have since twenty seventeen. Um, I am definitely in favor of anything that can bring commercial business in, in commercial areas, reliable areas. And the townspeople voted that they have, they wanted right to farm by law and they wanted this type of a facility. Now, obviously, all of the neighbors, well, some neighbors are shaking their heads and I get that, but we, we rule by majority, and also, we need to take into account everybody's, everybody's peace and everybody's desires. And certainly, I, I think there probably is a balance, and that's part of what we're talking about here, is to come up with a capacity that's reasonable. Um, that within the, the what, what the majority of the townspeople wish.
And we, and we will follow up with, with those, those questions, do you have additional?
I mean, you know, you bring up the farm part and the, and the farm community thing. You know, it's great to talk about that, because there's nothing in a farm community visions that Mendon adopted that provides for breweries or beer guidance, okay? It's not there.
You said that three times.
But you're bringing it up.
No, I'm just responding to you, sir.
Thank you for your comments, I think, I think we do, like, if there's one new comment.
Keep it forward, health, let's see if the subject system's adequate, let's propose.
So all, all of our select board permits are granted conditional on a routing slip, which involves public safety, building, fire, board of health, all applicable folks.
So that's all going to happen before you vote.
Of course.
That happens at, they're voted, the vote is typically contingent on those approvals.
Permit doesn't get granted until a lot of those boxes are checked and all of those checked out.
So that's going to happen before you take a vote.
No.
No.
The vote is contingent on those approvals, so we take the.
That'll be my suggestion, I think, before that works, you want to see if the subject is adequate before you grant a license. Okay, it just doesn't make sense to do it in reverse.
We've only been doing it that thirty, way, way for about thirty years, so.
I make it.
Well, it does make it wrong, you know.
Right. So, uh, I think we, it is, it is getting quite late and I do want to make sure that other people have, uh, um, chance to be heard, so, thank, thank you. Um, and it could come up and if you, uh, could just again say, uh, your name and address, please.
I think I have a similar, that's an option. I think, but it's not a greater is eighteen level street, which is across the street, the library hat. And it's, it, I think, it is an expansion, does it have to come before the board again?
So that question is not part of the public hearing because it is a separate property, so that will be, I believe, going to other boards as well, so.
Okay.
It's, uh.
It's just same property.
Short answer is, yes.
Okay, so it will be addressed, just not during this hearing, so, thank you.
Before I spoke, as, uh, my kids, in ten, now speaking as myself, father, I would like to see beer here, if you're even sure to say that, uh, for this part of the vision, when this public wanted there, and it's but since here.
All right, thank, thank you for your comments, do we see one more person? Okay, so, okay, two more people, and I think uh, maybe after these two, we will, I would be entertaining a motion to continue the hearing, but let's, since people are here, I would love to hear from you, so please, again, if you could say your name and address.
My name is Donna Shalaly, I live at fifteen Monogro in Mendon. Um, I'm here to express my support for the Vanderhols and the farm, um, for their application for this license. And I'm going to reiterate some things that you may have already said, but as resident of the right to farm community, we understand the importance of preserving our agricultural heritage. The Vanderhols farm not only sports local agriculture, but also contributes to the preservation of our hidden spaces. This aligns perfectly with our town's commitment to maintaining the rural character. Moreover, the farm has become a gathering space for the community. It hosts events like the farm showcase, the artisan markets, it brings people together, it fosters a sense of belonging and enriching our town's cultural landscape. All while helping to increase our much needed revenue in this town. I've had the pleasure of knowing the Vanderholt family for a few years now. I visited the farm with my children every year when they, when we first moved to town to cut down the trees, to walk around. I brought my Daisy troop, girl troops there, I brought my Girl Scout troops there, we planted saplings. And we made memories with kids in this town at this farm, and I just, I think it's really important to support their application and I urge you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I see one more comment here, and then we will take any comment from, uh, people attending online. If you could please say your, your name and address.
My name's Michael Sussnick, I live in thirty-two Loveville Street. Um, there's a noise ordinance, so as long as the music is going on, where, you know, nine o'clock is when noise ordinance starts. We have motorcycles that go through our town street all the time.
I would just, I, I apologize for the interruption, but just to be clear, uh, Mendon does not have a noise ordinance, but we have been discussing putting one in place, so.
There have been.
Your, your point, your point as well, okay?
This is, people have cars up and down the street for parties, graduations, weddings. Uh, do they need a permit? Is there anybody knocking on their front door to keep it down? Um, I've known these, this family for eight years. When I go to my dentist, when I go to my eye doctor, when I talk to people at work, everybody knows the farm. They have a very good reputation, people come from all over. So we can't fund our public school system, we keep up the budget for that. We want the seniors in our belt. We need money. So we don't want to raise property taxes, but we don't want to get business. This is a business that's been there for different communities, for different families. I'm in full support of them. Again, I think they're doing the two delegates to make sure it's safe, friendly and a good environment for everybody. Um, again, it's funny where we, we, we take our fights. Because again, we've got people flying up and down the street. Uh, we've got, you know, we've got an auto mechanic down the street that makes noise. As long as it's within a respectable, um, timeframe, then, again, you know, I bought a house in the middle of the woods because I wanted to be in the woods. Well, so did somebody else, they bought a house. Next thing you know, there was one house and now there's twenty houses. That's progress, we can't stop progress. And that's what this farm is doing, is they're progressing. The old model's not working, we've got to come up with something new. That's what they're doing, progressive. That's what life is about, that's what we're here, all, all are here to do is progress in life. And when you run a business, you have to keep progressing and finding ways to make money. So there's restaurants that have music. And again, we're not talking about having Metallica come out and jam every time. We're talking about having somebody come out, you know, play guitar, and again, it's going to be within a reasonable time, it's not like they're shutting down at two o'clock in the morning. So, you know, again, a little bit of noise, we're neighbors, we're all a part of the community. And, uh, which is best.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, and then, uh, I would like to see if there are any comments online, I don't see any such, any hands up, but, uh, if there's anyone online who would like to, uh, add comments or questions. So I believe, I, I do not see any, uh, um, so I think would we need a motion to continue the hearing?
Yeah, um, I, I just wanted to go through a couple of things, restrictions on, some of the questions were restrictions on total size, a question on zoning, a question on the scale of the restaurant, um, portion of the loft.
Not a restaurant, right.
Kitchen, kitchen aspect of the loft, thank you, uh, capacity, uh, a parking lot by law calculation, uh, the motion being specific to the routing. The motion being specific to the routing slip with approval of board of health, building, public safety, um, indoor, outdoor, number of attendees and modifying the entertainment license to be more specific on on the specific, on the hours and the days. And then modifying the retail versus pouring license with the A B C C application.
With the entertainment, do we have any ability to specific as the type of entertainment? Amplified or not amplified, you know, that's joke, but I mean acoustic versus Metallica, right?
Potential seven.
No, it's nothing that we're going to sell tickets to.
No, no, but I guess the idea is we just want to be really, I I don't want to provide clarity because it will help in the future when people raise questions saying that's not what they we signed up for, when in fact, we can be very specific, like, no, this is what we did sign up for. There's a rule.
Select word has the ability, you're open April, talk October, it's like what has the ability to grant an entertainment license for April through June and revisit it.
And is there some way in which, so April through June, is there some way of restricting, say, the number of such events? I know one, one resident expressed concern about it being every weekend. Is there some way that we could at least for first year, say, no more than, I don't know, X number of such events per year, at least for a first year? That would be a potential way.
My my specific question, again, is is there a provision for us to um, after we, after we continue this hearing and take a vote to, how then to begin to sale, to sell the alcohol, the 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 wine that they already have to people before noon time, so that when people do come in the morning for the next few weeks.
I think that's, there's not a rush there. I think there's clues for the season now, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So, right. So it would be, this would be after, this would really affect you when you open again in spring or summer. Okay, so there is not, there's not urgency about that question right now.
Okay. One thing I would say is a lot of what you just heard are things we're trying to gain clarity on, what we can do. I think what I would ask me, if we, if we continue, which I think we will, that you come back with more specificity on what your actual plans are. Capacity levels, hours, a lot of it was, well, it's not really ten to eleven, it's going to be, it's going to probably be on the weekends. If we can drive more certainty on what your plans are, that would help with what we do. And it would probably put some of your neighbors more than these.
Sure.
Concerns. And 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 further, when it comes to the entertainment, you know, specifically in which, which, how many times and which days and which hours? Because then what we would do is issue, just like we do for a driving, we would issue, you know, licenses for a particular event on particular days, you know, with particular times, each one of them throughout the season. But but with a reasonable amount of flexibility.
Right, so, right, some, some number, which is, you know, not all the nights perhaps, but right, some. And that might, yeah, that might alleviate some of the concerns from the, from the neighbors. Um, all right, were there other comments? I would be looking for a motion to continue.
I move to continue the six thirty five P M. Public hearing date to be announced.
Sussick.
Discussion. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh. Whatever, yeah. That January date would be great.
And we will notice the public through website and and newspaper and social media and whatnot, but there will not be another a butter's notice sent out for a continuation. Uh, but we anticipate it will be January fifteenth.
Thank you.
The amended motion stays to be January.
Okay, all right. So all in favor of continuing and on January fifteenth?
Aye.
Great, thank you. All right, thank you very much for your time and thank you to the many members of the public in your listening.
Thanks.
So you had a nice little break there.
I was a curse. It's a totally different point. And Jeremy, I like your songs.
We, we do need to continue the meeting. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Excuse me, our meeting is.
Folks, folks, we have a physical conduct.
We do have a number of other items on the agenda for tonight.
You don't want to stay for my town administrator report?
Okay. All right, so we, we've done one, we've done two, so three, so I had a pretty public hearing for six forty five. Um, and Jeremy, you have some words on that.
Yeah. Bob, are you online to talk about the Verizon license, the cable license? Um, so we, we have an annual cable license with Verizon that needs to be renewed. Work with an attorney to do this on their annual or semi-annual basis. Um, our attorney has been going back and forth for the cable renewal license between our version and their version, redlining with attorneys. The document was not ready for tonight, so we we are already out of the institute and requesting to continue the public hearing to a future date. Um, likely December eighteenth, we hope to be ready for then, uh, but if not, it will be continued further on to then, so. Motion would be to to continue. We don't, I talked to our council about this. You don't have to open the hearing. We don't have to take testimony. Um, we can just continue the hearing.
To continue it without opening it, so we don't need to open it at all?
Right, so I talked.
We just pass over it?
So because it was advertised, we need to uh, notice the public that we are continuing to a future date.
And will we, do we open it then on December eighth? Is that when we formally open it? Okay, so then I would be looking for a motion.
I moved, so I moved to continue the six forty five P M. Public hearing for Verizon for the renewal cable television license December.
Second.
Discussion. So I know.
Yeah, I don't.
Okay. So if there's no other discussion, I guess all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, great. So we will continue this hearing on December eighteenth. Okay, so then, um. Okay. So we'll just keep going back to in order of this, in order of the agenda, so item six, meeting minutes for circulation, so you should all have received the minutes for November twentieth. Were there also minutes for November eighteenth, our brief?
Yeah, we we talked, we talked about that. Uh, the audio was a little bit difficult, so Katie was putting together all the rest of it, but there will be minutes.
Okay.
It will be, it will be brief, but it will be.
Right, so you may, you may recall, November eighteenth was where we met very briefly before the annual town meeting to vote on the one question about, about uh passing over the article relative to the senior community center. And I believe there was another, there was another question we voted to pass over, but so things relative to the annual town meeting. Um, okay, so then item seven is the select board policy and procedures.
So Elena pointed out something uh, today to me, uh, the select board policies and procedures involves, uh, which are not yet accepted, uh, but involve a provision on how to amend the policies and procedures, which say we have a first reading and the select board puts it on the agenda and then we send it to council for review before it's adopted and then we have a second reading where you vote on it. Um, I think that's a great idea to make sure that your policies and procedures are not countervailing to N G L in some way or another. Um, so should the select board be in favor of, we don't need a vote tonight, but this can be considered our first reading, we'll share this with council to have a review, um, and then you can vote on it, um, but that's in, that's a procedure in your policies which are not even adopted.
So I was reading through it, I'm like, where are we in this process? Because it's, so.
Well, I guess my question would be, and chairman, has, has council actually reviewed the document?
It sounds like.
Not to my knowledge.
Yeah, it sounds like that hasn't happened and I I think, so and so one, right, so one aspect is town council review and the other aspect is having it available for public review for at least ten days before we vote on it. Um, and I think, you know, since that is in the policies, that is something we could consider, but I'm, you know, open, open to discussion about that.
Before we get to those two steps, are there any outstanding questions that need to be discussed amongst the board?
About the.
About the paragraph.
Right.
About the way they drafted.
So.
So, yeah, the comments that are in there should be, should be taken out for the the ones that remained, because we've addressed um, the comments that were present there, the ones that are there should be removed. Um, so if there is any question on how the comments were addressed, I think, I think most of them are really obvious when Katie and I were going through it. Um, it made a lot of sense and there wasn't really any consternation or disagreement between incorporating them and not.
And you rescinded the one that left everybody confused that I gave you.
That's the one that's currently in there that we need to delete, so that's why I'm still.
All right, so it's not there anymore?
Uh, right.
All right, okay.
I mean, I did have, I did notice an additional couple little minor editorial comments, so like, there's like an extra bullet point that doesn't have anything, but I feel like and then there was one thing about like for the appointments that it said to like municipal building committee and all of the other like boards and committees that we appoint to were specific ones, but we don't have a committee of that name. So like, so like, there is an other committee, so I propose striking the the name of the committee that we don't actually have.
That's probably. Yeah.
Um, but I just, yeah, so anyhow, so I did read through it, so.
I don't know where that came from.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I will, I will take.
I mean, I was just, it was a minor thing and I mean, it just, so we don't need to go through additional processes, so.
So we can consider this our first reading. I will tighten up or polish or whatever we're on those two points, post it online, send it to council and when available next, we will.
And then, right, so, yes, give us the ten days, but I mean, I think, I think it's a good start for us to follow the policies and procedures in the document, even though we haven't voted to adopt them, but I'm open to other suggestions.
Me as a board, so that was just a proposal that I put in there.
Yes.
You think that's a good idea is how to go about doing this?
Are you talking about the approvals?
Yeah, exactly, like, hey, have a first reading.
Yeah, I think that's a good, good one to discuss, right? I mean, because I think this is relevant because we're talking about having a financial policy document and updating our personnel policy.
I think why it's a good idea is it prevents something from coming before the board and then the board wants to do something countervailing to policy and then that night they vote to change the policy to do the thing they want to do, right? It gives like a kind of.
Right, okay.
It's like a check and balance on this. And I also, I think what it does, each one of us are looking at this individually and we can't meet in a group unless we're at a posted meeting.
Yep.
So that's exactly where we can just, and what we've done this whole process has been a delivery process. And I think it's great, you know, we think, we think where we need to be, now we have lawyers looking at it and see if there anything we're doing that's, you know, that the counteraspax general law that we need to fix and if not, come back one more time and then we can vote and approve them.
And the policy says, policy has a hierarchy, right? That supersede this, but you don't want to put something.
Right, right. And also, I think having it available like publicly on the website, just in terms of transparency, so that people know what our policies are and they can call us on them.
I would say a a ten day review period for the public, when you post it online, I'm not sure that's necessary because we'll have them post it anyway.
Right.
And if there's, we get feedback, we'd go through the amendment process. It's all, it's an open process where the public always has time to provide feedback.
So that the ten days was a number that just came, came out of the air. We think it should be adjusted.
Maybe.
I think it should be.
Can I, because if you don't know this, when we post the meeting minutes, is is the, the, what's actually contained in those policies posted with their online?
So what is posted with the meeting minutes is what's called the enclosures. So there is a list of what is included in your packet, but the actual documents of the packet are not included. Should a member of the public want one of those things, they can specifically request it.
Okay, so my point is throughout this whole process of developing meetings, every time we brought this up.
It's true.
There was a list that was published and if somebody had a burning desire to see what policies we were developing in the process, they could have made a request and gotten it. So there has been not just ten days, but this may have been.
Right, it's a good point.
I just kind of simplify the process to accelerate the ability to make a decision.
The cadence of the sports meetings being every other week, more or less, means that if you have two readings, a ten day posted area just means we posted it between meetings and that satisfies it, so it's not, it's a, it's a distinction, not a difference.
Right, or.
That was.
Right, I mean, maybe might be easier to shorten the ten days. I mean, that some, I think, you know, forty eight hours is sort of similar to open meeting law.
I would just say remove that as a written piece because, Jeremy, to your point, you've got two readings as a board and we post them on, we have them available online. Then the people have the ability to want to attend a meeting. If they're interested in the policies, look at the documents if they want to.
I agree.
I just want to eliminate, streamline as much as possible the the very specific things that people might say. Did you get, do we have a ten day hold period for public?
Yeah.
I'm like.
That's.
Yeah, so right now, what they would have to do to get a full copy of the document is to specifically read the list and then email it and request it in advance, correct? So I'd be okay, I don't really, I think that's, that level, that sets the bar too high personally for me. I'm, I'd be okay with saying it needs to be posted as part of the agenda, the whole document needs to be posted with the agenda.
So, so is something, something.
Link.
Something like. For the hearings, sometimes it would like additional, additional materials.
I don't want to have them to do like a public records request to get it, for them to have like, oh, what is that? Click.
Right. I'm, I guess I'm in favor of like, like you of having it available online. I just, I do wonder about the ten days, be like, because especially if we are waiting to hear back from council, some like.
It could stretch out.
It could, it could, like it could push us back another meeting and I'd, I'd rather have it be like, if, I think, I feel like forty eight hours is reasonable for somebody to read a document, so you know, something more like, or at least in the same sort of cadence as like our open meeting law, like, like.
If you want to make it easy for the public, once this original document goes online, then you have a link to the amendment with the before and after, so they can just specifically add this is the proposed change, what it was, what it is, and just have a link from the agenda and it's boom, you're there, you can see it.
Talking point later about agenda creation.
It'd be cool if we could do that automatically, huh?
Yeah. It would be. So, yeah, I think the forty eight hours is a good.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be fine with that.
All right, so I will craft language that connects it to the agenda posting.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Um, I will also say we have Bill Solomon online from our public hearing that we just continued.
Okay.
Um, so.
We can, I mean, I think we.
We can take his, so, Bill, Bill, are you there with us?
Yeah, we can, we can take this out of order and go back to.
You're muted, sir.
Still muted.
Still muted, unfortunately. Can we hear you?
No.
Okay, is that better?
Yeah, we can hear you.
All right, there you go. Apology, I was out before on the browser. I could see you and hear you throughout the last minute, but when it got to the cable matter, I guess it didn't work on the browser and it didn't see me, so good to be here. I know it's a long meeting. I I just say two things. One is, as of the continuation of the hearing, if you, you mentioned the date of two weeks from now, that'd be great if we could have that date and you can put it up on your, on your website and I can talk to Jeremy about other ways to notify the public. But I expect the license, we're going back and forth on the license, as Jeremy said. Uh, I, I, I think we'll certainly have it done by the beginning of next week, maybe actually this week even. So I'll have the license for you. I did a summary, I won't go through it now, but it's a, it's a continuation of the last license. If you remember where Verizon licensed about five years ago and we have, Verizon has shorter licenses, so we are, we're up for the, the renewal. Uh, and we've agreed on the financial terms and I I think we probably going to be down to one or two issues on the legal terms that I was updating for the revised license actually tonight. Uh, so with that said, I look forward to be, being before the board again in two weeks. Should have a license and summary to you next week. And I'll be at. and, uh, I'll be at your hearing either in person or remotely to go over any questions, and uh, it'd be good to get that voted here in two thousand twenty-four, a lot of changes in the world, as you know, in terms of technology and video, um, and, uh, it, it'd be good to have that wrapped up, and I, I believe we will, and I believe you'll be pleased with the, uh, the license document in terms. So that said, I look forward to seeing you in two weeks.
Great, alright.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you very much, good luck with your, uh, your, your prior project, it's a good, with every opportunity comes challenges, so, uh, I used to be town council for thirty years and thought you did a great job, so thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, so, uh, returning to, uh, I believe we weren't quite done with the select board policy and procedures, um, but it sounds like we, we just about did it, right, so I think, um, we'll not be voting on it tonight, uh, because we will, uh, do our best to follow the policies laid out in that manual that we are like. Yes, so, yes, but thank you so much for your work on that, Brendan and Jeremy and Katie, like that is, I think this will be very helpful to us. I look forward to us having these policies online and potentially replacing some of the old policy documents from previous boards, uh. So.
Everyone's going to like sort of words.
Well, we'll see what town council says.
Yeah, that's true.
Um, but I think, oh, I guess one question is whether we are okay with just accepting, you know, town council edits before we vote, I think we will be voting, so I think that will be.
Yeah, we'll get a redlined version from council that you'll be able to see if there's anything substantive, right?
And then we can, we do have that opportunity to discuss once we fill the agenda to vote. Alright, great, and then, uh, like, okay, so moving on to item eight B, uh, it's a shame that we didn't get to this before, uh, well, there were so many people here, but, uh, I did want to acknowledge the, the, um, Hinbuck, uh, high school, uh, varsity girls soccer team, uh, won the state championship, uh, in Worcester, which was based on, was it a week ago Saturday, um, so very exciting for our town, for our schools, um, and so I'm sure we'll be hearing more about that, like, I know there were, there was some, you know, buzz online about whether they would be in the parade, but I don't know what, if anything came of that. But, uh, anyhow.
Get your six thirty yet?
Oh, yeah, so, so.
Have a question. Some, some interesting things.
Science, right, yeah.
Who else?
I, I, right, I wondered about that too, I think you.
Highway.
Yeah, highway. Um, so, yeah, we were talking about that, I, uh, I actually have a town administration report later, I have a meeting with amended Southern Regional School District tomorrow, um, so this was one of the things that, you know, it's something that they want to drive and ask us, because it was, it's a school district thing, do we want to have it at, you know, in what, at what juncture is going to, what towns would want it, has there been a M U R S state championship or, or recently? So that tells me probably not. Uh, so, alright, so we don't have to follow precedent, uh, but if Highway, Highway has signs, I'll talk to the school department and see kind of what they're.
And I would just, yeah, I'd like to say congratulations to that team, I know, uh, many of the girls are from Mendon, uh, on that team, in fact, I, I know several of them from my son's kindergarten class, so, you know, that's exciting to see their names in the, in the, um, newspaper, so, very exciting, um, yeah, for the team.
Do you think it would make sense to me, would it be helpful?
I mean, I wonder that as well, and I don't know, like, they'll probably be getting recognition from the school district, I would expect, but I mean, the fact that these, I mean, this is, this is a big accomplishment at first for these, and especially since, you know, I don't know, like, the proportions, but many of them are from Mendon, um, so I, I mean, I, I was certainly be open to that.
Could I ask the town administration to reach out to your counterpart and help them to create a joint resolution between stores of the two towns?
That sounds great, yeah.
Yeah, I will see him tomorrow and ask him just.
Okay, fantastic. Alright, any other comments on this one? Alright, so then, uh, item nine is, uh, more straightforward than, uh, originally, so it was to, um, review an app, a pa, an application for a peddler's license, but, uh, Jeremy, do you want to update us?
Yeah, a request, um, after a request from the parade sponsors, um, to keep this a vendor-free and cost-free event, uh, for those attending, um, the absolutely key vendor has withdrawn his application, um, in, in deference to that request, so there's no action.
I, I do have a question, because Chief and I spoke about this, when there's a venue here once before, because they brought it up that you didn't want any vendors, and and, and to their credit, the police immediately spoke to the, to the, to the, to the peddler, which I'm guessing is the same, who actually probably applied now, you know, because he showed up thinking he didn't need one, or I, I think he should have known if he needed one. Do they have the authority, does the board, does the police have the authority to just stop them if they do show up without a license, I mean, this would suggest to me that they do.
I think we need to make the motion, just take care of it, usually.
Yeah, well, I say nothing is.
Nothing.
Yeah, well, my question is, do we need to take a motion, give some kind of affirmation to that, so that, you know, so for everybody, you know, all, all the docs know, if somebody shows up to try to sell stuff.
Yeah, we'll do it.
It strikes me as. Right, I mean, it strikes me as, maybe we need some clarity about our policy.
I just, I just say it just needs to be be clear, that if anybody shows up to, to peddle their waders, that they can't, that, that they're not licensed and need to leave.
You mean at this event in particular, or just in general at?
Well, I think, I think, if, if we have a, if there's a mechanism in place for them to get a license, and if they don't have a license, they need to be made to leave, that's all.
Does strike me that it would be good to clarify a policy about this moving forward, I know that, that, that particular license that the peddler was that's online, listed Mike Goddard as, as chair, said a few years ago.
But it brings up, or it brings up an issue that it, it's, it's really difficult if you're, you know, if you're law enforcement, and, you know, you, and it, it's not clear.
Right.
So I just want to make sure that we make it crystal clear.
Right.
That, you know, we, we don't want if they don't, if, if we haven't given them a permit, that they can't do it. So is there a clarification for Chief Percy and his team to know, take an action, or are we?
I think with authorization, because I think right now, what bylaws it falls on the building department, so we need a building inspector.
I see.
But if you want us to do it, like I think last year we'll do it anyways.
Right. I'm just trying to, we directed clarification to all potential vendors that might show up, and you need to, I think, making that clear if they're actually watching us.
I think you're probably covering yourself, so it's authorization, so if I go into the hit laws, they, they can't come back on you and say, well, he didn't have authority to do it.
Right, that's.
Yes, alright, so that's, that's your suggestion.
Make a motion that we, uh, find the, the, the Mendon Police Department the authority to, uh, remove any peddlers that, that show up without a permit provided by this. Second.
Discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you.
Tell everyone the motion.
Thank you. And thank you for that suggestion, Mike, I think, and maybe in the future we can consider, um, you know, these licenses when we review license policies, so this, this maybe could be added to it to update, uh, policy.
What, like, but mediation is, or, you know, permitting, so like, at some point in time.
Right.
You're going to have a lot, let's put it forward.
Right, right.
But like, are we doing all of those types of permits, special access permits?
I think maybe as the general bylaw review committee goes through, that there may be some mentioned in our town bylaws about permits, so that would be.
Bylaws, first day.
Okay, so, right, so that might.
Follows the police and then keep it under the building inspector during regular business hours. You know, because he had to go down to Imperial one time, he was selling something in the parking lot, so he dealt with that, it was during business hours. Maybe for off hours, you know, obviously not going to call the building inspector at six thirty in the Friday night, so. For temporary use or something, just your policy review.
Right, okay. Okay, uh, any more on that topic?
Probably, and, and answer to something that some people said during the hearing, um, Mendon does not have a, uh, a noise bylaw.
Right.
And I had spoken to the chief a couple of times about putting something, getting something in place for this annual town meeting, with the town.
Makes me interpret it so we don't get too loud at town meeting.
Alright, thanks, yeah. We have a, we have a, we have a lot of time on our radio, certainly, he's, he's used to loud voices in his ears.
Alright, so, yeah, so that.
I just want to say.
There are some annoying words.
So it gives us another option, so right now the only option we have is criminally charge someone, if we get someone to be a nuisance and they won't stop, we're charging residents, criminally, I just saw, we can give that option, but fine, and maybe it's a deterrent before we get to criminal charges.
And along the same lines of, there's nothing more frustrating than being tasked with keeping the peace, and it's forcing the law, and not having all the tools that you're, you know, because you end up having to remove a fly through some of these forehead with an ax.
So, I expect that the general bylaw review committee. For that, that question, so Jeremy, did you have something else to? Oh, okay, alright, so, great, and it's great to know that the, uh, general bylaw committee, review committee is meeting soon. Okay, so, uh, on to number ten then, that old salt box room update.
Um, yeah, so we, uh, we filed a plan, uh, with the registry late last week, um, defining, um, defining the parameters of, of the parcel, um, and we're working on, um, the legal ownership kind of chain of title, um, to define it, um, these are not serial steps, but they're both necessary steps to get to actually accepting, we need to both define where it is, define who owns it before we can accept it. Um, so kind of the same questions I've been talking about, but town council's been in Europe for two weeks, so we have no support, uh, but we have, um, we have this filed with registry, so one of our two boxes are checked, which, this included, um, um, a, uh, a surveyor, um, to go out and survey the property, so, um, this was also.
Alright, was somebody else, wasn't there somebody else in the office though, that was, uh, dealing with that issue while she was gone?
We had somebody else who was, you know, on call for our stuff, um, who we did use.
Oh, I thought it was the real estate guy.
So that's, I, I had multiple calls with the real estate part of, uh, town council for the issue we discussed in executive session at the last meeting, um, which some resolution to, which we should schedule an executive session on the eighteenth for me to talk about, um, but rather than going into deep, it was an open session, um, uh, but no, we, we have, we did not have progress on this or the Thanksgiving.
So, and just, I think clarifying, so was the old salt box room, um, was that surveyed, you said that?
Yes.
Has been completed?
The plan has been filed with the registry, uh, book nine eighty, plan one seventeen.
I mean, that's a little time, fine. It's, well, we keep asking this, we keep, so.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I feel a little frustrated and kind of sending very little new information to you each week, um.
Yeah, it's kind of.
Yeah, um, so I, I have, I've made this a priority, I'll make it kind of in priority before Christmas break, um, but it is, yeah, it is not an arrest. I'm trying to pass the voice.
Alright, thank you.
As, as a, the answer likely piece to this, uh, the town of Holddale, at their, their annual town meeting, for the recent town meeting, actually, uh, uses community preservation money to buy an adjacent piece of property, uh, we do a pathway, we're going to pass a draft, because there was somebody trying to build with the other, and, um, now that that can't happen, so that's been purchased, at the same time, there is a piece of property on Powers Road, um, that I have discussed with previous principal assessor multiple times, um, that we don't know who the actual owner of the property is, and there's back tax that's owed, and there's a process for that, and that was suggested to me that we check with Holddale, because that's all, it all comes together there, and perhaps going with the landowners in those towns, we're looking for, it's that piece too. It'd be great to pass something along to the principal assessor to look on powers, while we're in this, while this is all going on right now, to clean that up.
Yeah, you added that, Jeremy.
Who it belongs to, with.
Okay.
You know, there it was all.
Thank you. Okay, so, uh, should we move along to eleven, Jeremy, that's surplus highway street sweeper?
Yes, so this is part of, uh, the special town meeting vote, uh, where we, uh, where town meeting voted to, uh, appropriate three hundred thirty-five, three three hundred thirty-five on the list, put appropriate, um, money for a new street sweeper, uh, we have a quote, uh, from somebody on the state bid list, um, at a number below that, so there will be money able to be returned to, to free cash when we close out the fund, uh, and it includes a, um, trade-in value for this two thousand and six model at somewhere around four thousand for those towns. College, that, uh, but before we can do that, before we can sign a purchase agreement for that, um, it needs to be cleared surplus. Um, so we've talked at length about the, you know, inadequate, or inadequacy of, of this unit.
Moving to two thousand and six, Elgin, Elgin Pelican Highway Sweeper is a surplus, so, second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Exciting that we're gonna get that new street sweeper.
Yeah, cheaper, uh, always.
Um, timeline, uh, been time for this, right?
Twenty weeks every week.
Thanks to his performance for a while.
Yeah.
Thanks.
So, I mean, so, yeah, it's the, the old sweeper, like it's surplus, does that mean it's no longer going to be in use? In this unit?
Um, let me find, um, delivery, uh, so it's been declared surplus, we can, we can still use it, it just allows us to dispose.
Okay, good, thanks. Where was might be simple.
Right, it would not be practical to, um, you know, ask you to vote to declare some of these surplus the day before.
Right, right. Great. Alright, then, uh, twelve is ARBA update.
Uh, yeah, so I emailed some, um, uh, proposed motions shortly before the meeting, we had a number of moving pieces on this, um, literally four of them came in this afternoon, um, so, um, we have thirty-seven thousand two hundred sixty-nine dollars of unallocated ARBA balance right now, um, kind of the first harriest one, um, we have a twenty thousand dollars allocated for a town hall punch list, um, which we've discussed is a bit amorphous, and then twenty-five thousand dollars for a legacy senior center adaptive reuse, um, which there is no such thing as a legacy senior center right now, um, so my recommendation is to combine those two allocations into a forty-five thousand dollar new fund, um, for a senior center and town building assessment, um, which is something we discussed as, this board discussed last, last meeting. Um, I've been in discussion with one kind of O P M construction consulting firm on how to approach it, one architectural firm, um, and I'm talking to another architectural firm one day, um, that was to kind of help me define my scope, define what's realistic in this budget as proposed, um, and then kind of define what sort of, um, yeah, what's, what's sort of professional, I think, it turns out, um, it's more, more along the architectural lines than the construction consulting lines. I think ultimately, um, a construction consulting can help us, or an O P M style firm can help us on the broader strategy, so I'd like to even maybe contract them on a short money basis to almost review what the architecture firm is, um, is proposing, but have that be a direct relationship with the town, not a sub to the architecture firm, right, not wanting to work for us, not work for our vendors, to say, yes, this vendor, good job. Um, so this would involve, um, as I've scoped it, would involve, uh, you can take one step back. Um, the approach on the senior and community center on a publicly facing, kind of official document wise, was about, uh, a new facility at the North Ave Lot. Um, the, the council on aging and then the building commission had lots of, lots of discussions internally, um, about kind of alternatives, but I think, and again, this is anecdotal, we don't have exit polls, uh, but what I had heard was a lot of comments on why not this other thing. Um, and I think it's incumbent upon the town to show its due diligence that we explored alternatives such as expansion at the current site, use of other existing facilities, combination with existing facilities, and we already have what the new build looks like. So this approach kind of comes from my experience with M S B A, the Massachusetts School Building Authority projects, when you bring this project to the M S B A, So this approach kind of comes from my experience with MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority projects. When you bring this project to the MSBA. They force you to give an option that says, what's a code only ren- renovation, what's an addition slash renovation? And what's a new build? And you have to scope those and price those and say, here's our preferred option and why. And then you convince the MSBA and they say, okay, we'll fund next month. So, um, I kind of want to take that approach with this project and say. We're, we're, we're not just, you know, throwing spaghetti at the wall. We're, we're shelling walls with sticks. We're, we're presenting three distinct options and walking through why one is the. The operational, financial combination, whatever, best option for the town.
My memory is that we started this with the, with the design of the same architect. Of expanding.
So, but I think it was never, I think they never did the full cost estimates for that design. Um, did they? I mean, I saw.
I would suggest that we just go back to. The architect and ask them to pull up that, because I remember a presentation.
I, I, and I watched that online, but I mean, it had an estimate, but I don't know that it was the detailed estimate that we had.
I think the reason we didn't do it, because it was so expensive. We already knew even the estimate, it was, it did drill down. It was so ridiculously expensive to get really. Not much of an increased capacity.
Well, I do, I do really like this approach that Jeremy is bringing up because it gives, it provides a baseline, right? So to bring the current facility up to code even without any expansion. So that it gives a good point of comparison, because I think people don't have that. But I think what you bring up is also useful to bring that, that's another piece of the puzzle, uh, to compare to, um.
I think just, just doing product data to that building, which is not compliant.
Right, I don't think that, I don't think any of us want that, but if we need to know, let that be the cost. And I think if people know how many millions it will take to just get us the same thing, but up to code. I think that's an important data point.
No, it is. You're a really great head start.
Okay, right, so those will be, I mean, yeah, I think we could, we could certainly track down those documents and bring them up to.
So hopefully that part of the exercise would be.
Did I see someone else?
From our committee, there was numbers done.
There were numbers done and after it was two thousand eighteen or nineteen. So I don't think we did up to date cost analysis numbers. We just basically figured out inflation on it. So the original, Mike was working for another firm back in two thousand seventeen, eighteen. So they did that whole entire model and preview and cost estimate back then. But when we did this new one, we didn't, we didn't waste the money to do it all. We just added inflation.
Right, yeah.
We said, yeah, let's move forward this in a bit year. So he's twenty one.
Yeah, this was before Phil simply, this was before everybody, this was the very first.
Said, any pre-existing studies. I, I think it doesn't, it doesn't hurt when people have said, well, like, because I had started on Facebook, oh, why don't we just renovate the current building? And the answer was, yeah, we've already looked at that three times and it just, yeah, he's done.
So what?
So they're basically, you know, um, you know, jacked up the front door.
And now, I mean, I think what, what we need are the, the current realistic cost estimates for that option, which, um. Hopefully we won't get, so.
I'll be making motions.
So, um, yeah, I know you, Jeremy, said some, some, yeah, I, I would entertain such a motion.
Have you ever said vote the town hall punch list to twenty thousand dollars allocation, senior center adaptive reuse twenty five thousand dollar allocation? And further to allocate that forty five thousand dollars to a new senior center and town building assessment fund.
You probably need to specify in our, right?
Or, uh, sorry, in our allocation, yes.
And all that's our allocation.
Uh, further discussion. Alright, all in favor? Alright, great. I think, yeah, I, I'm personally very excited about getting those answers, um. Yeah, that will be very useful data. Okay, next up.
Um, these are, uh, five housekeeping measures on stuff already voted. Um, so, um, we had two. Highway funds, a dump truck replacement and pickup replacement, which had some leftover dollars for equipment, radios, et cetera. Um, and after paying those bills out, um, the dump truck replacement fund has five hundred forty dollars and sixty three cents. Pickup truck fund has three hundred ninety eight dollars and ninety four cents. That will not be expended. Um, and so the suggested motion is to rescind those two allocations back to the unallocated.
And the, and, and so it would continue to be unallocated, but you have a plan for, um, okay.
Signing.
Okay, uh, discussion?
Also.
Okay, also, yes.
Amendment.
Uh, okay. All in favor? I opposed. Great, and then the next.
And then there are three additions. So, uh, the police cruiser replacement was an initial allocation of sixty thousand dollars even. Um, kind of nothing costs to, that even, so, uh, the invoice was sixty one thousand nine hundred forty dollars and thirty five cents. Um, so the requesting motion would be an additional out, our allocation into the police cruiser fund of one thousand nine hundred forty dollars and thirty five cents. Uh, parking lot paving, uh, we received bids today, um, at three o'clock. And the apparent low bidder, um, has a, um, their bid package appears to be complete. Um, and it came in six thousand eight hundred dollars above budget. Um, the, uh, um, budgets which we were basing it off of were when contractors came out initially and gave the library director. Um, some quotes, uh, none of them included prevailing wage, so we tried to scale up from what initially was included. To get to a prevailing wage rate, um. The library director was very apologetic that his number was six thousand eight hundred, nearly ten percent off, but I told him it was six thousand eight hundred dollars on a paving project. He's never done a paving project before. Uh, John Dudley, our highway surveyor, was ten percent off on paving project, would be more concerned, but, um, uh. I thought it was reasonable considering what we, what we have available. Um, I will say that provides no wiggle room for change orders. Um, shouldn't there be unforeseen conditions? This is a lump sum bid, but should there be unforeseen conditions which were not described in the scope, that would not be covered in the bid price? Uh, but I thought it was unwise to allocate this restricted money, uh, for a potential future, because then it's tied up in a contract. Right, tied up in the fund. So there may be additional funds requested, um, from general fund sources. In the spring, when this pre-paved project actually happens, um, but this will, um, fund the, uh, base contract. And if for some reason the bid package is not complete, there's something wrong with the package, we need to reject the apparent little bidder and move to the next highest bidder. Um, it's almost ten thousand dollars more, um, so that will be at your December eighteen meeting. Just wanted to be, just tell her about that. Um, and then, uh, the last point is, uh, the website. Um, so as you know, we, uh, the board allocated funds for website redesign with our current website vendor to move to their central platform. A lot more accessible, um, a lot more user friendly, great, uh. Increase in our, a great, uh, improvement in the user experience. Uh, kind of on the backend of that, they have an agenda, uh. Uh, agenda and meeting management, um, that Jason and Melina joined the demo of last week, I think. The, the, the first year cost for this is sixty three hundred dollars. That's the startup and the first year fee, and then the second year fee is less than that. Um, I think Katie liked it so much, she might pay it herself. Um, it was like, really, it was a great, it was a great tool. Um, it allows, it really allows a succinct package generation, um, allow. So say, say the police chief wanted to put something on an agenda, rather than kind of emailing me and me getting to Katie and then it getting through. Um, we can standardize a form, department has to get training on it and stuff like that, where they can put in all the information that gets through. We get to approve it through the process and it gets generated into a packet item and populates on the agenda, um, in a way, so. There have been times where just through the sorting of emails, or someone calls me, or texts me, or says something in the hot, in the hallway about an agenda item. And then forty eight hours beforehand, I just make it on agenda. This, this centralizes it and kind of puts in an, in an official paper trail process. Um, the, the vote tracking, the searchability, um, I, I think it's, I think it's a, um. It's a really useful tool. And I thank Jason for, for bringing it up to me. I didn't know it existed.
Yes, it's another, they have a giant platform, so this is one component of many. But I, I think from the town's perspective, we think about, like, get, get away from select work for a minute. The clerk needs to publish these. That is all automated, it's built into the new website. So as Jeremy, uh, give, goes through that process he was talking about, then instead of having to output PDF and all that. Just, it's just gonna do that, link it on the website, make it all magically through then. If, for example, you wanted your policy, uh, you entered an agenda item, Jeremy approves it for the policy change. And you put that add on, you, you could choose to have that show on the website or not. Yeah, and so you can make those decisions electronically. And then, um, when it gets super advanced, uh, we can, you know, see, uh, and track those votes electronically. Over time, you'd be able to search on a system and find out what you voted on, how, if you vote on the same things. That kind of stuff, there's metadata generation that the system isn't containing about our people.
You can't data and likewise, you can get access to it.
We have access.
In terms like gates for posting an agenda, is, we don't have a, a file.
I think so. I mean, she was also at the, at the demo. That's right, that would be one of the, right, I think it would still need to go through the town clerk. And it's just that I think her process would probably be a little bit easier instead of manually adding a stamp and uploading it to the calendar. Then it would, that part would be more automated. But she would still have that approval.
And from a readability point of view, this is something we could do now, but it takes a lot of kind of back and effort for us to do. But when, once the agenda is loaded and we have, you know, so we have the public facing agenda that could have some subset of the attachments. And we have the select boards packet, which has every, every piece of the attachment. Um, your agenda, when you click on the item, it'll take you to the, to the backup that's associated with it. Um, which, you know, is, is a thing you can do with Microsoft, but it's not something that we do each week because of the time it takes each week, but it's automated.
We were talking about it, but I think this perfectly.
Public demo?
Yeah, we talked about, it's a good thing. I think people can see it, feel it, look at it.
But not limited also, we want to try this with select work. We can expand up forward strategy. So, uh, the licensing, uh, allows us to help everyone, once we figure it out for ourselves. Which could be a lot of operational time, gets into automation.
They did report that demo, I know that could be being available. Members, I know you were talking about maybe doing it for like a, an open meeting. Which I'm not opposed to, but, um. But I, I don't know. I'm open to that, that seems like. So I think it would, it looked like a really, a really good tool. I mean, I think, I think I maybe mentioned, I had this vision once. Of us having a database related to our agendas where it would actually have, you know, the, the attachments associated. But, and yeah, Katie and I talked about this, but in this, but this tool does the things that I, you know, in my vision and more. So like, and it's like, it's built to be integrated into the website, so that is, um. That's, you know, definitely, uh, I guess it will save a lot of labor.
And, and the license is for ten. The annual license is four thousand eight hundred dollars for ten.
Um, Katie, could you forward that email from John that contains the list of the towns? To the board, and then you can see other towns using it, how it looks on their website, they have them on.
Yeah, it's, uh, Kingston, Watertown, Bridgewater, Max. I'll have both the new website and this agenda. Yeah, it's, yeah, it's far less labor intensive.
So I think, yeah, will be a big, a big time saver, but also like, I think it'll give us more consistency as a board. And it'll be better for the public to have those. I think all of the documents will be much more easily searchable. Cause I, I speak from personal experience and it's like, when did we vote about that? And I might have to go looking back. Scanned PDFs in many cases, so, so. I think that will be really good.
Because like, I was supposed to PDF, that's all gonna be OCR enabled, like, it's not gonna be an image. So no matter what, like, platform or tool you're on, you're just, you can just control F. To find something will work, whereas that right now is very difficult.
So yeah, I haven't had a chance to play around with other towns' websites, but yeah, we should, we should do that.
So with that.
Yeah, now, yeah, okay, you're not waiting.
The ARBA motion.
Okay, so yes, we would need, uh, I need to make a motion for that, uh, that third one and improving this for our.
Move to allocate available ARBA funds, one thousand nine hundred forty dollars, thirty five cents to police replacement fund. Uh, sixty eight hundred dollars elaborate paving, and sixteen hundred to website redesign funds.
Discussions? Uh, all in favor? Opposed? Great.
Twenty three thousand one hundred sixty eight dollars and ninety four cents. Uh, that's included, that's inclusive of all the options.
Did we, or did we?
We did earlier. You, uh, so.
Oh, yeah, 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 sorry.
I asked about the, the two firsts, of where there's in the basement that were in series. You know, this, these backgrounds, you know, that. Um, have we ever actually got, you know, a clear answer about? Is that all needs to be redesigned, or is it just not, or is it just not? Set up properly, or is, do we have an answer?
That, I don't, I don't think that was on my radar, um, to answer, so I, I, I don't have an answer.
So before you just sort of clear, if you go into the, into the bottom. Across the town clerk's office, there is an air exchange in there, and there are two large. Rooms, and they seem to be in series. This whole area of the building, basically behind the stage, you know, is all new. It's built on top of the town well. Definitely need to put a new well somewhere else and add on heating. And these offices in the back, um, even though they're radiators, I think they're just there for show. Because they don't actually heat up. And we have, we had somebody. With HBCD expertise a few times, um, cleaned, they never seem to get them. And it was seeming to me that, uh, you've got a little bit of ARBA, you've got punch list money. Really should. Send it advance from the person that had been used. And again, as you may not be surprised, you know, Dan is aware of it. You know, I actually had a conversation with the guy a couple of times in, uh, last summer. But it's really something that needs to get addressed. I think it could be. Probably, you know, there's some parts of the building you should wear, see that it's eighty five degrees and the ones are. Fifty five degrees and. Be prepared to get, get it sorted out.
Thank you for that. Jeremy, it's, he's ready. Check one thing, get two things added to your to-do list. No, no, it's good, it's good to have them, yeah.
We, um, we talked about possible. And having just property assessments, things like that. I'm not sure if that's something we can pursue.
Whereas that's separate from the other, that first discussion.
That's the first discussion. The first thing had more specifically senior center, community center effort.
Yeah, um, so around town, so we have the special town meeting appropriated technical assistance for the recreation field committee. Uh, twenty thousand dollars there. So apart from that, we, I mean, we don't have anything allocated, so, um.
There is an additional piece to that, I mean, I, I would wholeheartedly. There is an additional piece to that, I mean, I I would wholeheartedly agree with what Mike suggested of having someone. Overarching view of everything, because one, one, and again, another problematic issue. You know, the swine cemetery, which is where everyone has been buried for years, is, you know. It it's full at the end, you know, there are no more spots, but and now this, this, yeah, it's not, it's not filled, but they're getting the empty spots. And if you go down George Street, right, you see it's a burial ground there. Uh which people are using that space. But I know I said this before, but at the intersection at the end of Cemetery Street where it meets Prada's Road. There is, there is a car park, which actually isn't town road, it's the the end of the other end of Stair Street. And it, and it is town property. One of the landlords walks it, you know, for insurance purposes. And has believed that the town abandoned, never really abandoned, just it's a landmark. But it's on, but the point is, the town owns a big piece of land up there um around what's called the Cook Cemetery. And it is um perfect for that use, you know, the drainage of the land has been checked out many times. And it would be a perfect place to create a new cemetery. For the town, it's a growth, we're talking about, you know, people in town, growth happens, you know, we approved the bylaw. To allow people to add another dwelling space onto their existing one. That, that's an issue, a need to address, and I, I think it'd be perfect if there's a way to to fold that into like.
I think it folds in naturally, because what what I, and and I don't think twenty thousand dollars.
Right.
Almost gonna end with, I suggest we revisit this Q four as we get closer to year end.
Right.
Possibly allocate, I mean, some if you can.
Yeah, I mean, that was, yeah, I was thinking was like, there's not a lot of lead time.
Which I mean, I think, what I'm, to the point of fifty, is we have town, we're supposed to get town needs, actually needs to process.
Right. Right.
More than that, it's exactly.
Well, I think potentially at least the that senior center, um the town building assessment fund, I think some of that information might feed into it. Because whoever does that work will be evaluating at least some property appropriate for that building. So um it, there's, I guess that it might make sense to do it somewhat serially, since that's going to be looking at some of the properties. But I think there's no reason that we need to completely table it, right, we need this, there's a lot of research to be done. Um in terms of the, you know, the town properties.
I'm just trying, this is a big kind of facilitation.
I, oh no, yeah, yeah, no, I think, right, well, I think, right, I mean, I think we should keep talking about it, because I think it's just, it does seem like. Not very feasible to get this done with the ARPA money, with the constraints and with all of the things that are.
And and, right, the ARPA money needs to be committed to a contract.
Right.
To some of the records, so I just want to remind everyone that whatever funds are allocated, um sorry, not already committed to a contract. I'll ask the board to allocate to a kind of a general municipal purpose, we'll be more specific on the eighteenth. And then use that for general fund purposes, so it will essentially create additional free cash at the end of this grant.
And so I think maybe, maybe Mike, um maybe we can have our goal be to to fund this in May, like. Okay, good, cause then, yeah.
Flipping back to when I gave my.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I think this is an important, I I agree, it's an important goal, but, yeah, so I I, I don't wanna lose sight of it either. And so thank you, Mike, for bringing up the cemetery issue, I have heard that come up occasionally over the years. Um and so, yeah, I think.
Yes, and to me, when I was riding with my wife up George Street and I saw folks in there, they just think about. You know, those issues with families, um it's almost a crisis. Cause I thought there's, a lot of, a lot of people have lived here forever. And they, they don't have a spot.
All right, so um were there any more updates for ARPA? So I think, yeah, actually, Jeremy, if you could just repeat that, so that's the bit about what happens. Yes, or wait, was that?
Yeah, so they need, it needs to be um committed to a contract by December thirty first, so anything um next week, next meeting, we'll need. Um kind of a cleanup cleanup note sort of thing, uh allocated into, I'll ask for an allocation into a fund. Um for a specific municipal purpose, which will eat up the the whole of the fund. Um and then free up general fund money or otherwise um used money. Um so we we make sure we bring everything out of, out of ARPA that we can.
When you say specific, could you just allocate it to the facilities and, you know, payments again that we said?
Uh so we, we can't, yeah, we can't allocate it into the general fund. So we have the general fund over here, the big bag, and then we have the smaller box over here of ARPA money. Um and this has to be committed, either expended or committed to a specific contract. So what I would, um what I would ask for permission to do is um uh set up one of those sub funds within ARPA. To say this is for, you know, municipal insurance, or this is for firefight salaries or something like that. And then be able to charge something to that fund to liquidate it immediately.
Firefighter salary is just a sample, I guess, but, yeah.
Correct, right.
Just.
I likely, actually, let me take it back, I'm not gonna take it, I'm not gonna have it be a salary. Because then when we go look at year over year actuals, it's gonna kind of screw something up, and we're gonna see, you're gonna ask me at the end of fiscal year, why is it thirty thousand dollars less?
Yeah, subs.
Yeah, there, there is not, there is not, so typically with federal uh funds, there's the supplement versus uh supplanting. Uh but with ARPA, it's any lawful municipal.
That's what we're sold.
I don't know if that two years ago.
Okay, great, thank you, was there anything else on ARPA?
Uh that's all.
So that's, uh oh, town administrator report. Yeah, back to you.
Um so I'll go through the, there's not, uh there's a lot of uh numbers to them, but there's not um a ton of depth to a lot of the steps. So uh this Wednesday, uh the, this coming Wednesday, the eleventh at noon, the senior centers having their holiday lunch. Um so I'm gonna be in attendance, um trying to not get in the way and trying to help serve stuff. Um so uh folks would like to, like to come help out, um senior center would love to have you volunteer. Uh great communities award, we already talked about that. The general bylaws review committee has their uh first meeting tomorrow. Uh I'll be the president officer until they organize. They are looking for a select board liaison, told them kind of. All do that for now, um and then uh we can discuss uh as a board, it wasn't on the agenda item here.
What time is it tomorrow?
Seven thirty, starts seven thirty, so they have not picked a regular day and time to meet. Um but this was their organization meeting, um so it was important to members of the committee to have that sooner rather than later. So it pushed back uh on the clock wise. I had a uh kickoff with a, well, kind of an introductory meeting with Katie and uh the text my gov team, the uh texting communication that the board allocated money for. Um we've got our first full kind of hour long training session uh next week. Uh so we'll have some more updates going forward, probably by the end of January, we'll have it go live and something like that, but that's rolling underway. HR and I have been vetting a couple of solutions for um additional voluntary benefits for staff. So this is um insurance benefits, which are, which are employee, employee paid for, there's no employer cost to it. Uh but it, uh it's um critical illness insurance, uh accident insurance and uh supplemental short term disability. Um insurance, which we have short term visibility, uh but it only pays a portion or a portion, so this is uh for people at certain wage levels. This was able to be stacked on top, but again, it's all employee pay for and it's a college tuition benefit piece to it as well. Um so I have an all stat meeting on uh December eighteenth, uh where we'll be kicking that off and introducing it to employees. Uh so I think, I think it's great, totally voluntary, if you wanna participate in this, you can. Uh I think there's some good benefits for for um some subset of folks. Uh talk about senior center evaluations, uh MU RSD, I have a meeting with uh with the uh up to town manager. The uh the school staff tomorrow, talk about fields, talk about capital, and talk about their budget process, just kind of keep everybody on the same page. Um HR and I have a kickoff meeting with our compensation and classification, um studying with the Collin Center tomorrow. Um we've been feeding in information and things like that. Um I have invited the unions prior to being part of these discussions, um if you have to get a bite on it. So once we do our kickoff meeting and figure out where the decision points are, we'll again invite the unions to be part of the decision making process. Uh but there have been no decisions on, you know, what the comparative communities are, we have not dropped them.
You provide us some of these uh scripting uh models that are being sold.
Yeah, certainly.
That I sent a few that we don't have today, that that. The focus on, or not devote, not focus on statement, but probably create job roles, you know, fire or or there. Those are correct, you have my status today, that doesn't.
Yep. So I will make sure that's folded in, show that with the board. Uh that's a good point, thank you. Uh Civic Plus, we talked about that, uh library paging, we've got those bits in today. Um just calendar wise, a couple of, a couple of vendors had said it's a, it's a good time to bid a project like this, people are looking to fill up their spring schedules, right? No one's doing any work right now, asphalt plants are shut down, um are shutting down. Uh the library received their twenty five thousand dollar earmark for a study on the rectory and its future use um from state. So I helped figure out that paperwork today with, with the library director. Um and um the uh schools have asked about annual town meeting date, if it's not going to be the first Friday in May. Uh when do we think it will be? Um but that's a bylaw change that has yet to go through the attorney general's office. Um so right now, our bylaws are not amended to reflect it. Um so I don't think there can reasonably be a decision made now, but something to think about, or we have a conversation between these two about when an alternative date may be. Because the schools uh have a busy calendar in spring, wants to know.
Do you admire when the.
Problem is, right, I know. Right. That's regularly, because it's a problem, yeah.
Sure, it's not on a Monday or Tuesday. Good, great.
Was that, was that it?
Uh yeah, and we have one thing that you all need to sign, Katie, I think she put it up there for you.
What?
It's the uh easement that was passed at town meeting.
Oh, okay, right.
I'd like to have you all actually.
Okay, all right, thank you. I saw it out there, but I wanna sign it. Anyway, didn't have time to read it and. Great, uh so that was it for you, Jeremy, okay, so future agenda items, I mean, I I think a few have come up, but are there others? Yeah.
Um I would like, given. I'd like to get an update on the paving study, uh the plan, so I'd like to make sure people understand how much work has been done on the roads.
Right.
And what the next two hundred fifty something months.
Right.
Towards.
Okay.
Especially given Jeremy your comment on the past, you know, how's the time to line up spring?
Right.
I would assume you have a planning place.
Okay, yeah, it would be, it was.
Additional third year funding demonstrated, look what we've done, look what we're gonna do. We come back for another, bite of the apple, we're gonna say it's working good.
Danger to that.
And that's in terms of, you know, cyclical updates, we're also ending the near, nearing the end of Q two. Um so um I have a draft idea to be, find email out to department heads, they, you know, kind of give me, I can do the financial update, right? That's, is what it is, uh but I wanna kind of, I don't quite know the metrics by which every department measures themselves. And what uh they define their goals and successes throughout the year, so I kind of want to, want to gauge how they're doing that. Um and then present that to you as kind of a midyear report, an operational. So um it may be, just because we have the one meeting in January, it may be at the um February fifth meeting rather than the January fifteenth meeting, but we'll be putting that together for a minute.
So one thing um I'm reminded of, so we have our our goal setting meeting coming up on January twenty ninth. And I, I feel like there were some things we were possibly gonna revisit from that Collin Center workshop that we did. And so I wonder, can, did you have some to do list items from that? I'm just wondering if we could make sure that we bring those back to our, back, back to the surface before we do our goal setting meeting. Um so that we can fold in our goals that we're talking about, I know. Um a lot of them had to do with like, I think, like, like an assistant town administrator and building that. But I feel like there might have been some other.
To, do you have anything to clarify, some maybe not tonight, but, you know, there's goal setting meetings, two goals set different meetings to different people. Should we clarify that, especially for discussion, issue on state pages, or written.
That is, I think that's a great idea, right, to, and we.
As a future ten by.
It is, I think, yeah, I think that's a great, yeah, well, because that that way we, you know. But we come in with the same expectations, and if there's any preparation that we need to do, we agree on that at that time, so that's a great point. So I think, yeah, so um I can, yeah.
Too, um we did during announcements, uh events and announcements here. Uh the town holiday party and each public officials, each your elected and appointed officials, uh party is on the twentieth. Uh December, Friday, December twentieth, from five to nine at Galaford's uh at Southwicks. Uh open to the public, please RSVP to me, should you be wanting to attend, so I could add, you know, we can get a flying head count to uh to Galaford's. Um but it will be light horseshoes, um cash bar, um not paying for that, um but I just wanted to announce again to the public.
And actually, uh to to that point, I know that the invitation went out to boards committees and I believe Menden, like, and I didn't email the users. I wonder if we could also formally invite some of the um, like the committees, like the the friends of Menden elders and the friends of the public library. And any other, other sort of volunteers that don't necessarily have an official Menden status, but do a huge amount of work for the town. And I wanna make, I guess, they, they are invited as members of the public, but I would love it if we could sort of extend a more direct invitation to them as like volunteers who are giving a lot of.
Katie Van Grift flyer at the request of Amy recently, so uh that'll be posted in this community center and then I think.
Okay.
Directly.
Okay, all right, yeah, cause I know it, it came up at the friend, you know, at the council on aging meeting today, that one of the friends of Menden elders didn't know about them, like, oh, you're definitely invited. And I think it's, it would be nice to actually get that, like, have an email, like, request that the email go to them, so.
It's on the bulletin.
It is, it is, but I think, I think, you know, sometimes people see this general invitation and they don't think, oh, they don't really need me. So just for anyone who's listening, we do really need you, so thank you. If you, uh if you are, you know, giving your time to the town of Menden, you know, this is, this is for the community, like, you know, especially the volunteers. But other community members as well, anyone watching the recording, I know all of the, all of you there in the audience.
If you're watching.
Yeah, exactly, if you watch our meetings, you definitely are invited, and we wanna give you a separate address.
They told somebody for the party.
It will be, yeah, we've got enough.
Can I add some preemptive meeting agendas for February, March to just?
Yeah.
The, the my first run through the budget here was, was hard, it was a lot of work. And we were here every week for hours and hours, and it was, it's tiring, and it was a lot of talking, we got a lot of good stuff done. Um we did a lot of that kind of ad hoc, like, I've got to be next week, we got to be next week. Um it would be nice if we planned that in advance, so that we, we knew we were gonna be pulling on budget season.
Yeah.
Be, or that we're gonna carve pieces of the budget discussion up in the small amount of the mouse, where we weren't doing this.
Right. I know, Jeremy, you've done budget with other communities before, um but like we, I know this last year, it's been that we ended up having a lot, so we have. You know, different departments come and present, and we ended up, because of various time constraints, we had some really long meetings with, so say the school district and a bunch of other ones. So like, it was, so like, I think.
We could all start with it.
What's that? We, we could have if the time, I mean, I know that there were always reasons why we ended up with this, so there were like, yeah, so, but we can be proactive this time. We, we know this is coming, and so like, we can schedule this.
Just, just kind of to school, do you wanna like, just do police, fire, highway, like the tough ones, like all together, and that be your, that be your one big night? Or do you want to take one department and do one, one big department and a couple of different smaller ones?
I didn't feel like any department was quick.
Oh, there were some that, well, Dan covered like five of them, right? That's not.
Space, but you know, there's even library that likely discussion and any place where we're gonna be doing budget status.
So maybe, maybe we could put that question out, like, how much time do we think that the requests are going to be?
That will be, we say. How long we, we stay, I mean, yeah, twenty minutes, thirty minutes per department and we break it out over, you know, meetings we need to add. It's interesting because their last meeting weekly at that time of year is not unusual, right? So what we did last, not completely unusual. Um, I just think we can organize and facilitate and kind of.
I think so, I think, yeah, we've got. We've got more stability in the staffing and that will.
Yeah, it's interesting. I remember like council and agent getting jammed in, right? And they just, it's waiting and having to defend their point for hours. It's, I'm sure it's exhausting for the department heads, so, um, and they want to be clear how to get their point across, so. So I think part of the two will be the setting expectations and when departments can have their budget appointment things bring it to us, the earlier the better, to make them, just rid of both. Engage, you know, at shorter meetings, both for them and for us. So whatever, that's just a little bit, we, we will have a budget calendar.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
It's, uh, it's draft form right now. Uh, likely on the next meeting, there'll be a, um, budget calendar. Um, my memo is also kind of in draft form about budget meetings at the end of January, beginning of February. So I have, yeah. Revenue piece is pretty hemmed in, the salary pieces are pretty hemmed in. It's the additions and it's the service pieces. Uh, it's really easy to say, actually, putting that together and balancing it out is a little bit more difficult. Um, but, uh, there's not as much discretion in the budget as kind of a twenty-four million dollar budget would imply.
Is there anything that, like, you need from us? Because you're going through this the first time around and we can help you with, like, that's another question, man.
I think points of contention from last year or stuff that was either added or taken out or that you wish to see in and wasn't put in, stuff that, so I'm taking last year's budget document and kind of massaging it into a way that I'm familiar working with. But like, there's only so many different ways you can do it. So last year's, last year's Excel that I'm going to be working off is a pretty good document. Uh, there are, there's a note all over there, which is helpful, things like, you know, additional librarian added from state funds and will be added next, like that, that sort of notation is really helpful to me. Um, so anything that would not be immediately apparent for me picking up an Excel of last year's budget and then this year's budget, um, you know, and so then what are the select work priorities for fiscal twenty twenty-six? Um, it's my anticipation, so it's my instruction to, um, department heads for a level service budget. Um, I've gotten feedback from some department heads that they've been told on a level funded budget and as a result have had to figure out how to deliver services the same. So I'm, I'm requesting, um, that they bring in a level services budget. Uh, and then if there are things that they think are, you know, imperative to their operation, when we need another half FTE, I need another five thousand dollars for this contract, whatever it is, you know, ask for that in the budget process, I've, I've got this here. So I, I'm doing that from the department head side. But if there are priorities that, um, have not been apparent to me, or you don't think have been apparent to me, um, communicate that so we can put that on the front end and not have that discussion in March, say, oh, I'd like to have.
One, one thing I'd add is, of the two scratch sheets you described, I would say on those projects that's incorporated, I think you did special time meeting in terms of changes to the budget that passed.
Mm-hmm.
Then your coverage, if you have, and there's recent things like that, we need to make sure we're working into the close budget.
That's a good point. Um, so typically I would take a, a spit out, you know, but I would take a spit out that has proposed and, um, or sorry, uh, adopted and amended. So it would be, I would look at fiscal twenty-four actuals, maybe fiscal twenty-three, fiscal twenty-four actuals, fiscal twenty-five. Uh, I'm kind of working on two budget, two documents, because you'll have proposed, um, and suggested and recommended. But, uh, you have your original, your amended, your expanded, uh, and then fiscal twenty-six proposed, recommended.
Yeah, so I want to be amended in this town meeting.
Good point though, make sure.
So, um, so we will be talking a lot about budget in the spring. So I think, good, good point, we should be maybe all bracing our calendars for some extra Wednesday meetings. I think it seems like at least with this board that Wednesdays are, like, when we try to add in addition, at other days of the week, it's challenging. So, um, and I think maybe, Jeremy, if you could think about, like, when you would want more meetings, like, like what, like what months? Um, but maybe just be a little bit stingy with your Wednesdays and even planning for the, for the coming months.
Yeah, like when, the one month or five week months.
Right, we'll get, we'll get more specific, but I think that can be a little, um, yeah.
It's a good idea, too. Uh, it looks like, is that the theme win tonight or something? There's all school buses and, or is that Oxbridge's? Because I think Oxbridge wants something too. One of the schools with all the school buses, cruises and. I think Oxbridge wants something too. This will be, Sarah.
So, yeah, thank, thank you for that. Um, and of course, any other, other items that come up for future agendas? Uh, send it to Katie or Jeremy.
Forty hours of that time and all.
Yeah, that's a really good way to.
Ten minutes ago, Oxbridge, or, plus ten minutes ago, Oxbridge High defeats Mashpee for division seven state championship.
Sounds like that was.
For all.
Yeah, sorry.
All right, um, all right, so our next meetings, uh, we've got, our next regular meeting is December eighteenth, so in two weeks. And then, as we discussed at our previous meeting, we're going to have a bit of a gap before our next regular meeting and fingers crossed that nothing comes up that needs to be urgently addressed between there. Uh, it could happen and, but hopefully if that does happen, we can do a quick, uh, quick little remote meeting. Like if some, if something comes up between the eighteenth and the fifteenth. But hopefully we'll get everything in order.
On, on the budget meetings, have you typically met jointly with income? Or department heads present independently to both?
Point, they not really wanted to, they were pointing last year to ensure they.
I mean, yes, right, yeah, I think. But they did really appreciate that.
And I thought department heads would also appreciate explaining their budget once.
Yes.
Yes, definitely.
That was a big one.
I know.
I think everybody appreciated, like, it did, it was a great process.
Right, I know, I know, um, uh, the finance director was, was, uh, really appreciated for, um, you know, bringing in the finance committee as well as the collaboration of the, um, department. So, I guess we want to keep, keep in that spirit of, of collaborations.
That's proud, this introduced.
Okay, uh, so, wait, so, right, January fifteenth and then, uh, right, January twenty-ninth is our goal-setting meeting. And we didn't talk about if we're going to have that here or somewhere else. Did we, so that, that would be another start time. More things for you to fit in with. Yeah, but I mean, it's either going to be right here downstairs, it could be next door. Uh, it'll be, it'll be an open meeting, you know, following all the open meeting laws and being imported.
Do you want to.
The main, one main agenda item is discuss our goals. Sorry, what's that?
Do you want to make something a lot?
Okay, thank you. All right, so. Oh, and then, okay, February fifth is also on here as a regular. So we're staying with the, you know, two, you know, first and third Wednesday of the month, but with that expectation that, uh, so more will probably be coming up in, would you say, March? March and April potentially?
Yeah, early, early April.
Okay, so, so expect a few extra meetings to be added in, in March, April and then, right, as we move in. Things should, the decisions will have been made. All right, I'm sorry, are you talking, we just finished our special town meeting and now it's time to talk about annual town. Yeah. There we go, all right, so anything else?
I would need to adjourn the meeting.
Discussion, all right, all in favor? All right, meeting is adjourned at.
I'll be up at five, school, your nominee results unless we're closing. I have to come be up at five, talk to the school, September twenty-nine, do everything. You want to know if we close or maybe. What night? I can imagine that's what's the, that's what's.